Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is my honor and privilege to call to order the Tallahassee City Commission meeting. It is 3 o'clock on October 11th. We've got a great meeting today. Looking forward to getting underway. So it is my honor and privilege to introduce and welcome Rabbi Paul Sidlofsky of Temple Israel, who will be providing our invocation today. Rabbi, thank you. If you'll please rise.
Thank you, Mayor Daley and members of the City Committee for your gracious invitation today. As we prepare ourselves for the business of this afternoon, let us reflect on the importance of our work so that we may be fully engaged and ready for our task. Let us be thankful for the privilege of living in an open and free society where all members are able respectfully to express their opinions, just as we respectfully consider their viewpoints. Let us pray for those in other free societies whose lives and freedoms are threatened by violence. Here in Tallahassee, may we have the wisdom to combine respect for tradition with openness to innovation. May we be sensitive to the fact that a society is ultimately judged by how it treats those most in need. May we possess the gift of knowing that there may be many paths that lead to a shared and mutually beneficial goal. And may we reach out to others in this room and beyond these walls to create an even stronger shared vision of what our community is and what it can become. We ask for the blessings of inner strength and unity of purpose as we seek to enhance our city, where all have a place, and that all our citizens are proud to call home. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Rabbi, thank you once again. And I had the opportunity to speak at the Habad House last night at the dedication of their new building and the dedication of the Torahs. And I will tell you, as I said last night, that we are all shocked and saddened by what is taking place in Israel, the terrorist acts that took place. And we stand firm with our Jewish friends and brothers and sisters here in Tallahassee and with the Jewish community. And our thoughts and prayers will continue to be with you and the Jewish community worldwide. Thank you for being with us today.
Absolutely.
Okay. Do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Items 10.01 and 11.01 have been updated and are reflected in your agenda materials. And item 8.02 has been removed from the agenda and will be rescheduled at a later date.
Okay. Any questions on the agenda modifications? Excellent. All right. Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We have four incredible proclamations today. I'd like to invite my colleagues to come join me if you'd like as well. And first and foremost, I would like to invite Michelle Ridge, the President of the Big Ben Chapter of the Paralegal Association of Florida, and any other members of the association that are here as well to please come forward. This is in recognition of Paralegal Week. We do this every year. It's great to see y'all. We certainly appreciate all. Come on. Come on over and spread out. There we go.
We all went to this side.
That's right. And I have to read the proclamation. Okay. Sound great. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, from the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas in 1985, the Tallahassee Association of Legal Assistance was formed and later became a chapter of the Paralegal Association of Florida Incorporated. And whereas the practice of law is challenging and complex, and paralegals provide a vital connection between lawyers and the clients they represent. And whereas attorneys require the services of knowledgeable professionals who are committed to fulfilling the duties of a paralegal. And whereas paralegals provide invaluable contribution to attorneys, governmental entities, and private corporations throughout Florida by drafting and analyzing legal documents, case planning, and legal pleadings. And whereas paralegals work to maintain integrity and a high degree of competence throughout the legal profession while striving for professional enhancement through education. And whereas paralegals are educated and trained with a thorough knowledge of legal concepts and facts, and are experienced professionals with expertise in all critical aspects of successful and efficient law practices. And whereas the value of talented paralegals should be recognized for their great service to Floridians, now therefore, I, John E. Daley, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize October 23rd through the 27th as Paralegal Week and October 23rd as Paralegal Day. Read into the record in front of each and every one of you here today, signed with my signature, dated October 11th, 2023. It is my honor and privilege to provide you with this proclamation.
Absolutely.
Thank you for being present today for this special recognition of all paralegals by the City of Tallahassee. National Paralegal Day, October 23rd, is meant as a day to celebrate the ones who work selfishly behind the scenes, pushing the legal team to the best it can be, while truly advocating for our clients. We are all proud of our profession, and a little recognition goes a long way. Paralegals should be acknowledged and know that they are appreciated and that they are an important part of the legal profession and community. Appreciation for a job well done is said to improve work ethics, and today, Mayor Daley has ignited our recognition with this proclamation. We understand the privilege afforded to us to be at this public meeting and extend our gratitude. Our hope for the paralegals in our community is to receive acknowledgement by their employers to bask in the spotlight shown upon us today. This proclamation reinforces how important paralegals are to our attorneys, our clients, and the community, and we are grateful for the honor bestowed upon us. The pride I have for my profession was emphasized in the language of this proclamation. I was reminded of the dedicated men and women who fill these roles in our community and how fortunate I am to work with them. Thank you again for this wonderful acknowledgement.
And at this time, I would like to ask all three, Ms. Tracy Cohen, Dr. Michelle Mitchum, and Mr. Steve Beasley, to please come join us at the podium. I hope you don't mind, I'm going to do it a little different than the county, and we're going to do it all together, if that is all right with you. Steve, it's great to see you. Ladies and gentlemen, last week was an incredible week of celebration in our community, and you are about to see why. These incredible individuals were honored last week. They were honored last night at Leon County Government's meeting as well, and we are honored to have them in chambers with us today. So if you will please hold your applause, I'm going to read three proclamations to you now from the governing body of the City of Tallahassee. Ms. Cohen, if you'll come join me. A proclamation. Whereas the first week of October has been designated as Minority Enterprise Development Week by the President of the United States since 1983 and observed by the Big Ben Minority Enterprise Development Week Committee. And whereas our community and local economy have been enriched and well-served by the goods and services provided by minority and women-owned businesses. And whereas the Big Ben Med Week Committee is a local consortium of agencies operating in our business and entrepreneurial ecosystem that includes the Tallahassee Leon County Office of Economic Vitality, the Florida State University Office of Supplier Diversity, Leon County Schools, the Florida Office of Supplier Diversity, the Florida A&amp;M University Small Business Development Center, Talquin Electric, among others. And whereas an essential activity of the annual Med Week observance is the selection of a prominent entrepreneur for recognition as the Woman Business Enterprise of the Year, and the Med Week Committee is proud to have selected my friend, Ms. Tracy Cohen, owner and president of Target Print &amp; Mail, as this year's Women Business Enterprise of the Year. And whereas Ms. Cohen earned a bachelor's degree in journalism and mass communication at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, spent four years working for a global marketing research firm in Atlanta, eventually purchased her family's company and made Target, Print, and Mail a valuable community asset. And whereas Ms. Cohen serves on the Board of the Tallahassee Symphony Orchestra and the Leon County Schools Foundation, chairs the NWSBE Citizens Advisory Committee, and serves on the Economic Vitality Leadership Council, now therefore, I, John Evans Daley, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize Ms. Tracy Cohen of Target Print &amp; Mail as the 2023 Women Business Enterprise of the Year in the City of Tallahassee, and congratulate her for her accomplishments and contributions to the community. Read into the record in front of each and every one of you here today, signed with my signature, dated October 11th, 2023. Tracy Cohen, congratulations.
Thank you very, very much. Whereas, this is the fourth one of these that I have attended. I don't have much to say. But I just wanted to say thank you so much for the emphasis and the focus that you all put on making sure that NWSBEs in our community are put forward and prioritized in our community. It makes a big difference to us. I am one of many, many women-owned and minority businesses in this town who are proud to be part of Tallahassee's community, and I'm honored to be recognized in this way. So thank you very much, and thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. My good friend, Dr. Michelle Mitchum, if you'll please step forward. It's good to see you. From the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas the first week of October has been designated as Minority Enterprise Development Week by the President of the United States since 1983 and observed by the Big Ben Minority Enterprise Development Week Committee. And whereas our community and local economy have been enriched and well-served by the goods and services provided by minority and women-owned businesses. And whereas the Big Ben Med Week Committee is a local consortium of agencies operating in our business and entrepreneurial ecosystem that includes the Tallahassee Leon County Office of Economic Vitality, the Florida State University Office of Supplier Diversity, Leon County Schools, the Florida Office of Supplier Diversity, the Florida A&amp;M University Small Business Development Center, Talquin Electric, among others. And whereas an essential activity of the annual Med Week observance is the selection of a prominent entrepreneur for recognition as the Minority Business Enterprise of the Year, and the Med Week Committee is proud to have selected Dr. Michelle A. Mitchum, president and publisher of the Tallahassee Women Magazine, as well as Courageous Conversations as this year's Minority Business Enterprise of the Year. And whereas Dr. Mitchum brings over 18 years of university teaching and leadership experience to her wheelhouse as an entrepreneur, including at both Florida A&amp;M University and Florida State University, and has extensive experience in human services, business leadership, and training, and diversity, and inclusion. And whereas Dr. Mitchum served on the Tallahassee Leon County Commission for the Status of Women and Girls, and has been honored with several awards and accolades, including being named One of the 25 Women You Need to Know by the Tallahassee Democrat, a Leading Lady by the Young Actors Theater, and receiving the Media Mogul Award from the Tallahassee Community College Women in Leadership Awards. Now therefore, I, John Evans Daley, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize Dr. Michelle A. Mitchum, president and publisher of the Tallahassee Women Magazine, as well as Courageous Conversations as the 2023 Minority Business Enterprise of the Year in the City of Tallahassee, and congratulate her for her accomplishments and contributions to the community. Read into the record in front of each and every one of you here today, signed with my signature, dated October 11th, 2023. Dr. Mitchum, congratulations.
Thank you so much. I just want to say thank you so much, Mayor Daley. Thank you to all the City Commissioners. Tallahassee is a great city. I relocated here in 2015, and it's just amazing to be able to have this platform to uplift women, the diverse, amazing, beautiful women of Tallahassee, and take Tallahassee Women Magazine to another level. The magazine is dedicated to diversity, equity, and inclusion. It's very important for us to not only embrace but to celebrate diversity, and I'm really appreciative to the Office of Economic Vitality, and thank you for your efforts in shining a light on these efforts. I'm very thankful for all of our contributors, the advertisers, and all of the women who've really been vulnerable, like Brene Brown says, being vulnerable to share their stories because a part of their story is a part of every other woman's story. And mental health is very important. I'm also a psychotherapist, so I've included mental health and self-care. So lastly, just thank you so much for embracing the magazine, and I'm just really honored and I'm thankful to my family, Dr. Carrie McCord, my children, and God. Thank you so much.
Ladies and gentlemen, the man, the myth, the living legend, Steve Beasley. As I've said before, you are one of my dear friends and mentor, and it is my honor and privilege as your mayor to read from the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas the first week of October has been designated as Minority Enterprise Development Week by the President of the United States since 1983 and observed by the Big Ben Minority Enterprise Development Week Committee. And whereas our community and local economy have been enriched and well-served by the goods and services provided by minority and women-owned businesses. And whereas the Big Ben Med Week Committee is a local consortium of agencies operating in our business and entrepreneurial ecosystem that includes the Tallahassee Leon County Office of Economic Vitality, the Florida State University Office of Supplier Diversity, Leon County Schools, the Florida Office of Supplier Diversity, the Florida A&amp;M University Small Business Development Center, Talquin Electric, among others. And whereas an important activity of the annual Med Week observance is the selection of a prominent advocate of economic development for recognition as the Reggie Roll Economic Development Champion of the Year. And the Med Week Committee is proud to have selected Mr. Stephen Beasley, CEO of the MLK Foundation, as this year's Economic Development Champion of the Year. And whereas Mr. Beasley is a native of Tallahassee, Florida, and a Florida Agricultural and Mechanical University alumnus, known throughout the community as a sharp businessman with a servant's heart who strikes to make a positive, sustainable impact on Tallahassee's South Side. And whereas Mr. Beasley has been instrumental in many activities and events that have improved the quality of life for individuals in the Tallahassee area, including the Helping for Heart Annual Thanksgiving Dinner, the Soul Santa Program, Boy Scouts of America, and creating the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Foundation. And whereas Mr. Beasley had received numerous honors and recognitions from community and professional organizations, including the Governor's Appreciation Award, the Frontier International Award, and the Tallahassee Winter Festival Service Recognition Award, among others. Now therefore, I, John E. Daley, by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize Mr. Stephen Beasley as the 2023 Reginal L. Roll Economic Development Champion of the Year in the City of Tallahassee, and congratulate him for his accomplishments and contributions to the community. I have read this into the record in front of each and every one of you, signed with my signature, dated October 11th, 2023. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Steve Beasley.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. The mayor did it all right here, but I would like to turn around and thank the city for helping the foundation, mainly the Soul Santa Claus program, which is over 25 years and observed over 25,000 children during those times, and have bought over 2,000 bicycles. We couldn't do that without the help of the City Manager's Office and the Mayor's Office, especially the Police and Fire Department, which we bring the Santa Claus in on the fat truck. But the persons that we couldn't do without is the City Recreation Department. Ashley is here. I might be missing someone on that, but Soul Santa is one of our major, major projects. We also like to thank Mr. Barnes. Is Mr. Barnes here? For helping us with our back-to-schools school supply drive. That man get out and beg and beg and beg, and when he get it all together, he say, "Come get it, but bring a truck with you." We are happy to be here, but mainly, Tallahassee is a great, great city because it has a great, great communication department to get the word out. But we publish and have been publishing a black history book for over 38 years, and the City Communication Department helped us greatly with that. I think Ms. Allison is here. And we couldn't make it without the Communication Department. They even helped us do a little research. But I know it's a lot of other persons. I know I'm missing someone, but thank you, thank you, thank you. We also involved with Boy Scouting. That's one of our major, major projects because we are trying to catch young men before the gangs catch them. And the Boy Scouts, I was a Boy Scout, Eagle Scout, Garden Country Award, Honor of the Era, and I attended a national jamboree in 1958 where 52,000 young men gathered. And as if you've seen the thing that the city did on me, whenever I talk about that, I get goose pimples. When we, 52,000 young men sung the national anthem, I get goose pimples all over. But at any rate, somebody's pulling my coat tail that I've said enough. But we are involved in scholarships. We give a Martin Luther King kickoff luncheon over in the rotunda of the courthouse every year and give away scholarships. Last year, we gave away scholarships, 1,000 a person, to two kids from Lincoln, two kids from Godbe, and two kids from M.U.D.R.A.S. And that was the first year we did that, and we hope to keep that up. And we have a number of other small projects, and we do a lot of answering problems in the community. That's where we call on the City Manager's Office. When they call in a problem to me, I call the City Manager's Office, and we try to get it corrected, and on and on and on, and thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to, Mr. Manager, will you be introducing the next presentation or just the...
Mr. Mayor, if we could invite, I see Terry Arden in the audience, the chair of the Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce.
Ms. Corey Melton, good to see you. Thank you for coming and joining us today.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the Commission. I have joining me some of our key leaders with our Tallahassee Talent Development Council. We have about a five-minute presentation to share with you the great news of Worlds of Work. I'm going to pass this to you, Corey. I want you all to stop for a moment and imagine a future where every single 12th-grade Leon County student walks across the stage to get their diploma, and they know exactly what is next for them. They know what education, what training, or what career path is for them. I want you to imagine a future where every single local business CEO has the talent that they need to be successful, or they're building their future talent pipeline. We all know that the best way to predict the future is to create it, and that is exactly what we are doing with Worlds of Work. What is the why behind this first-ever program that is taking place next week? First-ever program in this community, first-ever program in the state of Florida. The why behind it is that we believe every single student should have a post-secondary pathway. That's the bottom line. Who is behind this initiative? Well, here are two great leaders, along with, where is Keith? Come on up, Keith. The Tallahassee Talent Development Council, we created this two years ago. It is comprised of Career Source Capital Region, Tallahassee Chamber, Tallahassee Community College, Lively Technical College, and our wonderful Office of Economic Vitality, and two of our leaders here representing there, along with our school board member, Daryl Jones. So together, we came in and looked at what do we need for this community? How can we work more collaboratively to ensure that post-secondary pathway for every single high school student? And by the way, how can we help our members of the Tallahassee Chamber, as well as all businesses in this region, have the talent they need? Number one thing that keeps CEOs up at night is talent retention and recruitment. I know that we can help them. So we went to Alabama. Two different delegations went over and studied the program that they've been doing for several years, Worlds of Work, and Corey Melton, our staff member at the Chamber, helped to lead this effort. We saw so much success, we have now replicated this here in Tallahassee. Let me give you some numbers. Next week, we will have 3,000 9th-grade students bust in to walk through the Worlds of Work program. They will meet one-on-one with 100-plus businesses. They will learn about 17 different industries. And by the way, we have 150 volunteers that will be there to ensure all this comes together. I want to personally invite each of you to the VIP breakfast that will take place next Friday, 8:30 a.m. at Tallahassee Community College. You are invited to join us where you will hear more about Worlds of Work, and then we will go on a tour along with our students. We will be immersed with them, and we will get to go through each of the Worlds. Now here's where it's different. This is not your grandfather's career fair, where you stand behind a table and you get a brochure. This is immersive. In the construction world, our students may operate a crane. In the healthcare world, our students may help deliver a baby from a mannequin. These are real things that they will get to touch and feel. But even more than that, we know... But even more than that, we know that they need more information earlier as students of what are all the possibilities? So every single ninth-grade student has already received our Worlds of World book, Worlds of Work, easy for me to say. And in it, it has all the careers that are in our region. What are the job titles? What skills and education do I need? And what is the salary? So for example, if you want to be a quality control specialist in construction, you'll make between $34,000 and $88,000 right here. So this is what gets students engaged about what is my future and what am I doing next? So that's Worlds of Work. We hope you will get excited with us. You will join us next Friday at the VIP breakfast. You can see here each of the industry segments that we have represented. And I just want to take a moment to say thank you for our Tallahassee Talent Development Council. Thank you to each of you for your leadership and for being so engaged and doing things differently to overcome the challenges that we know will help to lift our students up and that will help to propel our businesses. We appreciate the time here today on the agenda. We hope to see you next week.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. Look forward to it. Uh, yes, sir, Commissioner Richardson.
Before you all leave, I, I wanted to just add to the presentation. Uh, I finished the last year and a half of my professional career as the community outreach coordinator for Lively Technical College under the leadership then of Shelley Bell, who was our director. And it always amazed me when I went out into the high schools and I would talk to seniors, some of whom were within their last 30 days of high school before graduation, and I would ask them, uh, what were their future plans? And so many would have no idea a month before graduation what it was they planned to do with the rest of their lives. And so I am very happy to see what we're doing now to introduce those students early to what opportunities exist, especially in the career and technical field. I'm one of the biggest cheerleaders of correct, career and technical education, uh, in Tallahassee and Leon County now. And you're talking about, talking, uh, uh, looking at a guy with three college degrees. I really believe if I had to do it all over again, I might, would take a different route and that would be the career and technical education route. And so thank you all for what you are, you all are doing. Uh, I think it's going to make a tremendous difference in the lives of so many students, uh, here in the Leon County School District.
Commissioner Richardson, thank you for that. And I, I think school board member, Daryl Jones, will concur. He shared that, that so many students that cross that stage and he shakes their hand and says, "What's next?" They're not sure. We can solve it.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Certainly appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Manager, do we have any announcements to come before City Commission at this time?
No, sir.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to adjourn the City Commission meeting and convene the sinking fund commission and go ahead and turn it over to the Treasury Clerk.
7.01. Thank you very much, Mayor. As you noted, you're convening as the sinking fund commission, which includes the City Commission, and we have a three-member investment advisory board. Tonight, we're able to have William McLeod and Seth Clark with us. We appreciate very much their, their service. They meet with us on a regular basis on a, on a number of topics in addition to, to the service here this evening. You have two, two items to consider, both related. Item 7.02 is approval of revisions to City Commission Policy 234, which is our non-pension investment policy. And by description, non-pension, uh, distinguishes it from the next item, but really what that non-pension investment is, is the investment of our operating and reserve funds, the, the things that help us to do what we do on a daily basis. So with this item, during the 2023 legislative session, the Florida Legislative, Legislature, added a section to Florida statutes that provides directions on investment decisions and proxy voting by governments like ours. Those investment decisions under the statute must be driven solely by pecuniary factors, that's the term used in the statute, such that investment returns may not be sacrificed to promote non-pecuniary or non-financial factors. So the recommended action tonight is to approve revisions to this policy to ensure that the city complies with Florida law. Compliance will not require changes to our existing practices for managing those internal assets, nor will it require any changes to existing contracts with our money managers that we've hired externally. In other words, this doesn't change the way we operate, but it does ensure that our policy would comply with the new state law. So these revisions were discussed and approved by the Investment Advisory Committee on August 31st and, um, the recommended changes are here for your approval this evening.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we do not.
All right, let me open it up for any questions, comments.
Move option one is recommended by staff, Mr. Mayor.
Option number one has been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the mayor pro temp. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion passes 7-0. We are on item number 7.03.
Thank you, Mayor. Similarly, this item presents recommended changes to our City Commission policy governing our investments for our pension investments. That's, uh, more clear in its title. We manage our own pension plan and, and invest the funds. Um, that's a significant part of what our Investment Advisory Committee does with us, uh, meeting with us quarterly, looking at those things. The state statute that is now in place has a similar requirement for those investments and therefore the recommended changes here would also ensure compliance with the new state law, but would not require any changes to our existing practices. You may remember that probably a year ago, we brought out some, uh, some changes to our investment allocations and that sort of thing, but we're not making any changes, uh, from what you last approved.
Okay, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been properly moved by the mayor pro temp, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? All right, all those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And it passes 7-0. Do we have any other business to come before the sinking fund commission?
No, sir.
Gentlemen, first of all, thank you for your voluntary service on this board. Certainly do appreciate it. And with that, let me adjourn the sinking fund commission and call back into, uh, the Tallahassee City Commission meeting. We are now, I'll give everybody a second to get settled. All right, Mr. Manager, we are on the consent agenda.
The only item that's been removed is 8.02.
And that has not been removed for placement other on the commission. That has been removed from the agenda for today.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Moving, second.
Consent's been properly moved by the mayor pro temp, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Are there further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda, um, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. We are now on 10.01. Um, I will go ahead and introduce, I'm the Director of External Affairs from my office, Madam Courtney Thomas, that will be presenting the next item, which is the approval and ratification of appointments and reappointments to Tallahassee Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. Courtney, thank you for your hard work and dedication on this item.
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Item 10.01 is the approval and ratification of appointments by Commissioner Porter's office, Commissioner Matlow's office, and the commission itself. And I also wanted to say hello to Stacey Strumay, the Executive Director of the OAS Center for Girls and the Executive Director of the Commission on the Status of Women and Girls.
Excellent. Uh, any public comment on this item? Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay, pretty straightforward. The recommended, uh, action is options one through seven.
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved by the mayor pro temp, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. The motion on the table is for options one through seven. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. We are on the introduction of ordinance 11.01. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 11.01 is introduction of ordinance number 23-0-24, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending sections 14-3.302, 14-3.317, and 14-3.402 of the Code of General Ordinances, leading to the, the police employees pension provisions, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 23-0-24 and set the first and only public hearing for October 25th, 2023 at 6 o'clock P.M. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay, the recommended option is to simply introduce the ordinance, option one.
So move.
Second.
Properly moved by the mayor pro temp, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Madam Attorney, item 11.02.
Item 11.02 is the introduction of ordinance number 23-Z-27, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory located on 5.02 acres located at 1545 Raymond Dill Road and 3343 Thomasville Road near I-10 approximately 150 feet southeast of the corner of the intersection of Raymond Dill Road and Thomasville Road as and in the, the City of Tallahassee Commercial Parkway from Office Residential and general, and general commercial C2 on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the City Commission, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and provided an effective date. Recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 23-Z-27 and set the first and only public hearing for October 25th, 2023 at 6 o'clock P.M. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Recommended action is simply the introduction of the ordinance. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Okay.
So move.
It's been properly moved by the mayor pro temp, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Item 11.03, Madam Attorney.
Item number 11.03 is introduction of ordinance number 23-Z-29, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, amending the Harmony Oaks Plan Unit Development on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, located on 17.47 plus or minus acres at the northwest corner of Crawfordville Highway and Whittaker Road on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and provided an effective date. Recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 23-Z-29 and set the first and only public hearing for November 8th, 2023 at 6 o'clock P.M. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Excellent. Uh, the recommended action is the introduction of the ordinance, option one. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Colleagues.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Probably moved by Commissioner Richardson for option number one, seconded by the mayor pro temp. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. 11.04, Madam Attorney.
Item number 11.04 is the introduction of ordinance number 23-Z-30, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory located on 0.47 acres located approximately 300 feet from the intersection of Tram Road and South Monroe Street as and in the City of Tallahassee Commercial Parkway C2, General Commercial from medium-density residential on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the City Commission, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and provided an effective date. Recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 23-Z-30 and set the first and only public hearing for November 8th, 2023 at 6 o'clock P.M. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Any ex parte disclosures concerning this item are available via the hyperlink included in the agenda item as published in the board doc system.
Excellent. The recommended action is simply the introduction of ordinance. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right, colleagues.
Move staff recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the mayor pro temp. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Madam Attorney, do we have any other ordinances to be introduced this evening?
No, we do not, Mayor.
Thank you. We are on policy formation and direction, item 12.01. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, sir. Let me invite John Reddick forward. I'll briefly introduce this and he can provide you more information. But at your last meeting on September 27th, you directed staff to bring back an item providing options for removing fraternities and sororities as allowed in the CU45 zoning district. Uh, following a review of the options for this particular zoning district, uh, it was discovered that fraternities and sororities are currently allowed in a number of other districts. And so we've, uh, described that in your agenda item. We recommend that you initiate an ordinance amending the land development code to remove fraternities and sororities as allowed uses in the CU45 zoning district and other zoning districts and geographical areas based on the locations of existing sororities. Let me ask John to put a little more detail on that, uh, for your direction.
Sure, thank you, Mr. City Manager, and, and good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. So again, at your direction from the last City Commission meeting, uh, we've evaluated not just the CU45 zoning district, uh, but in looking at that, recognized that, that fraternities and sororities are actually allowed in 12 different zoning districts citywide, um, in addition to the Heritage Grove Plan Unit Development. So included in your agenda item package, the, the map that shows just the, the breadth of where that could include, uh, most of these areas are within a suburban future land use category by nature. Um, so in our assessment of that and looking at where we typically know, uh, existing fraternities and sororities to be located, uh, that's why our recommended action in addition to, uh, removing these as an allowed use in the Central Urban 45 zoning district, uh, includes, uh, a removal from, from nine other zoning districts, uh, that wouldn't be appropriate, uh, that are of lesser intensity than that, um, or location, uh, wouldn't be compatible with other uses in that area. Uh, so, uh, also included is a map generally what we've been able to identify, uh, of existing fraternities and sororities, and we have tried to stay in communication with both Florida A&amp;M and FSU to, to map out where these existing, uh, fraternities and sororities are, uh, in an effort to make sure that we wouldn't make any of these long-established, uh, uh, houses, uh, non-conforming. Uh, and then so what we'd also look at is not just a, a flat zoning district, uh, amendment, but also specific locations within certain zoning districts, uh, which we've done for other uses, uh, in, in other zoning districts to say within this district is limited to this area. So when we look at where we know these existing fraternities and sororities are within our central core, we would look to keep them, uh, recommending to keep them west of, uh, Bruno Street, which is still within that, uh, historically established area. So that is why our recommended action is to initiate ordinance to come back to you that would not only amend the CU45 zoning district, but several other districts as well.
Excellent. Okay, uh, Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we have three speakers on the item.
Okay, let's go through public comment.
I, I say three, one of them, two names are on the same card, so I don't know if that's one or two speakers. But first, we have, uh, Vicky Waldridge and Jack Price. Um, as speakers come, each speaker will have three minutes for remarks. You'll see a light in front of the mayor, mayor pro temp, that is green and will turn yellow at two and a half minutes and red at, at three.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Joining us, your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Vicky Waldridge. I'm here on behalf of myself and my husband, Jack Price. We reside at 536 Beverly Street, which is two blocks directly north of a particularly, a particular proposed fraternity that we found out about several weeks ago. We are here simply to support staff's recommendation to change the current CU45 zoning allowances and anything that would push fraternities and sororities into very specific areas in the city. Uh, Mr. Clerk, I spent 26 years in the legislative process. I can do it under a minute. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Ramon Guillen, followed by Stanley Sims. If you'll just hand those to me, I'll make sure that everyone gets a copy.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Ramon Guillen Jr., and I am an alumni at Florida State University and a member of Pylem Defy. I am here speaking for and regarding the property located at 524 East College Avenue. When I first heard the city and residents were taking issue with the change of use on this property to residential and housing FSU fraternity students, I was concerned and confused. After all, our fraternity was founded on very noble ideas as the first non-sectarian, nondiscriminatory fraternity back in 1895 at Yale. The first line of our creed is literally that all men are created free and equal. Vocally, myself, our alumni, and our brothers are encouraging this esteemed commission and all members of Tallahassee's government not to make far-reaching decisions based on concerns from a very limited number of citizens that could impact thousands of residents, organizations, students, and businesses. We respectfully request that you look of all the facts, specifically fact. The certificate of occupancy application for the property of 524 East College Avenue was submitted for a duplex to house four to six of our brothers while they attend FSU. The maximum number for occupants allowed in this is six people. Fact, 524 East College Avenue is in an area, central urban district designated for C-45, which has the express district intent of providing for medium and high-density residential developments with densities ranging from a minimum of four dwelling units per acre to a maximum of 45 dwelling units per acre. CU-45 also seeks to promote infill and redevelopment of urban areas with sufficient supporting infrastructures, accessibility to services, and proximity to both the downtown and universities. An express fact, an express permitted use of C-45 is to allow for social fraternal and recreational clubs and lodges, including assembly halls. This change would impact more than this neighborhood. It impacts other areas that border FSU, FAMU, and other areas that may want or need the use of similar organizations. Apparently, the recommendation includes areas outside CU-45 to pigeonhole all fraternities and sororities into an unlimited area. We find this to be overbroad. Fact, there is nothing affordable, feasible, or available in the allotted zoning districts closer to areas where fraternities would want to live.
You're at about 15 seconds.
We have been looking and made offers on properties for over three years. In closing, the owners, students, and tenants strongly encourage our elected officials and the public servants to make decisions based on facts and be conscious of making targeted changes that could have far-reaching impact across the entire city.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
And Mayor, that is the last speaker. Misspoke, Mr. Sims has signed up to speak but on a subsequent item. So that's all the speakers on this item.
Okay. Would you like to speak on this item? Okay. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor, for this. I fill out a form afterwards. This is a prime example when we don't have proper policy. It's not an intentional mistake, but one that fell through the crack. So what am I saying? I'm saying that I trained my son, who is a new fireman over at the Quincy Fire Department on shift right now. Y'all may clap. It's not a bad thing to make a mistake if you take responsibility for it. I think this brother is trying to say, we didn't do anything sneaky, underhanded, or malicious. We took advantage of a property that the law of the land allowed us to do. And I don't like putting words in other people's mouth because I don't want nobody putting on in mine, but I'm gonna go ahead and do it today since I held your little size and stuff. But you would appreciate the fact that government would just take responsibility and not make citizens as if they were the villain. That's where we grow. That's where we build relationships. That's when we have a government that we can trust. I'm standing up here in a hostile environment. I am being trolled, Mr. Mayor, by your executive team. They troll me during this meeting because I have had strokes and I have a health impediment. Sometimes when I'm stressed, the pronunciations of my words, Ms. Barber, don't come out correctly. I can't say distillery. I say this, I'm sorry. I'm doing the best I can with what I got. And then for your chief of staff to do all of these negative posts about me.
You're at 30 seconds.
And I look at this smirk, that's the same smile. When she sent you the emoji, you punched laughter. I ain't in the fraternity, but they dogging you like they dogging me.
Our next speaker, please.
No additional speakers on the item.
All right, something enough for discussion, conversation. Commissioner Richardson.
I, my question is, there are active alumni chapters of fraternities and sororities in Tallahassee and Leon County. And my question is, would this apply to them if they chose to occupy a house? It wouldn't be for residential purposes as the college fraternities are. But I know of at least one fraternity in the community that has a fraternity house near Florida A&amp;M University. And I just want to make sure or be clear as to how far-reaching this amendment to the ordinance is.
Sure. Mr. Reddick.
Commissioner, this would be intended only for, I'll say, active students, not alumni chapter houses.
Okay. That clarifies my question, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had questions on both the change to the specific property mentioned. As the speaker said, they've applied to be a duplex. So how do they fit into what the change would be? Do they become a nonconforming fraternity? Or is it still a duplex allowable, all owned by a fraternity? Or where do they fit into this whole cycle?
And I think in moving forward with this, we would consult the City Attorney's Office on what that would mean. Currently, their application is for a duplex. I mean, we understand the intent to use it for fraternity functions. But since they haven't had that certificate of occupancy yet, I think we would need to consult when we bring that back to you on what that would mean for any fraternities in process, you know, if they were in process to get that.
And how is fraternity sorority defined currently in CU-45? And what's proposed?
Our definition by code for fraternities and sororities is towards residential occupancies or dwellings that are, that house students who are affiliated with these organizations, which are recognized by the university. So it is intended to apply to residential buildings that are intended to serve those fraternity.
And if we make the change, do we know how many sorority and fraternities would become nonconforming?
I could say our intent for those that have been established would be to not make any nonconforming.
Yeah, everybody that is established would be grandfathered in, correct?
That's correct. And I'll say, we haven't been able to identify any that would be made nonconforming that are already.
Okay. And I understand everybody's concerned about getting this right going forward. I am concerned about what we present and the Land Development Code and zoning is what owners have by right to do. That's what, that's what we're sending the signal. You can do this on this property. And so it's a bit concerning to me to be changing track based on a specific use, based on complaints that weren't necessarily zoning complaints, but maybe other violations, which were noise complaints, or maybe it was traffic complaints, and those sorts of things that I think should be enforced to limit those problems. I support trying to figure out going forward where these types of houses can be and drawing a clear line. But I do worry if we go down, we start picking and choosing who can go into an existing zoning that they're already allowed to do, that's a very slippery slope.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further comments? Motions?
I would move staff recommendation, option number one.
Option one's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson.
I would second it.
Seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion on table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. We are on 12.02. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me invite Dr. Kimball Thomas and Anita Morell forward. They're gonna make a brief presentation. And this involves the allocation of dollars that you assigned late last year and placed into the CHSP process for gun violence. That has now occurred. The nine-member Citizen Committee has evaluated a number of proposals. They've made recommendations, and that's what's before you today. Let me turn it over to Dr. Thomas to outline their recommendations, recognize the committee and their work. We're always appreciative of the work of the members of the CHSP. It's nationally recognized process, a citizen-driven process, and they've done it once again. And so we'll share with you their recommendations, and we ask for your approval of option one.
Dr. Thomas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, the manager go, respected appointed officials on the dais. As City Manager Goode has said, this amplifies your direction to us with respect to the RFP for the gun violence reduction. Here with me, my Human Services Manager, Anita Morell. She's our staff lead with our CHSP process for this. This brief presentation will cover, again, the Citizens Review Team's criteria that they used, also their composition of that team and their recommendations based on the applications that we receive. Anita.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Again, City Manager gave you a high overview, and Dr. Kimball just included some additional information. But what I wanted to share with you is, again, we did the CHSP process. This was outside of the regular CHSP process because that process does not start until 2024. So this was a very abbreviated process to ensure that we got this money out on the street. So the agencies submitted their applications, and they had to meet the basic CHSP criteria via 501(c)(3), registered with the Department of Ag, Department of State, and some other criteria they had to meet. But they also had to demonstrate some additional things in the application as far as meeting regularly with the council and the status of men and boys, that they will be available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to be able to respond to persons that were either perpetrators or victims of gun violence. They will be able to accept referrals from the council and any other nonprofit agency or law enforcement, and they would have to work very closely with law enforcement during their process of having this grant through CHSP. Again, the City Manager and Dr. Thomas mentioned our Citizens Review Team. For over 25 years, this is how we have administered the CHSP process is by utilizing our citizens in this community to determine what agencies and what services would be funded with this money. The Citizen Review Team was, they had an opportunity to review eight applications that were submitted. They based their review on reading the application against what was required in the RFP. The determination was made, and we had, again, the staff. City staff is not part of the decision-making. We are there to facilitate the process. However, the citizens are there to make the decisions. And then we also have team leaders that actually lead the team in this process. So we had seven Citizens Review Team members. We had Ms. Chotina Allen, Ms. Lauren Kelly Manders, Mr. William Brennan, Dr. Emma Fredo, Officer Henny Handy, Ms. Christina Logan, and Ms. Elizabeth Hollister, all of them from different backgrounds, different skill sets. That brings this richness to how they come to the conclusion of what services and what agencies they wanted to fund. The Citizens Review Team decided to fund four of the eight agencies that submitted applications. Here you will see they decided to fund Capital City Youth Services, Sientay, Capital, Pivotal Point Enterprises, and the Tallahassee Urban League. Our option is for option one, for you to accept the Citizens Review Team's recommendations and authorize the City Manager or his designate to execute agreements with these award agencies. And at this time, I'll open it up for any questions or comments.
Excellent. Question. Commissioner Williams Cox, Mayor Pro Tem.
Ms. Morell, would you please go back to the previous slide to show the proposed allocation? I wanted to just hold it there because I want the public to be able to view that as well.
All right, Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions. And first, I'll say that I spoke to our City Attorney. I'm not gonna vote on this item. There's just an abundance of caution. I do sit on the Board of Seanchia. So I'm just not gonna sit this one out. But I do have some questions.
Hold on, Commissioner Porter. Are you recusing yourself from the vote?
If you are going to recuse yourself from the vote, then you'll have to leave the chambers.
Fine.
Okay.
I can't ask about the process.
No, the policy states you're supposed to leave the chambers if you're gonna recuse yourself from the vote and not participate in any discussion.
Okay, I'll ask after the vote, then.
Hope you find after the vote.
Okay. That is, Madam Attorney, the correct interpretation, though, right?
If you are going to recuse yourself, yes. Under our city code, you have to leave the chambers.
Okay. Real quick, any other clarifying questions before we get to public comment? Great, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, we have no public comment on this item.
Oh, okay. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Richardson.
I wanted to point out to the public that's here and those that might be watching online that this is only one of many initiatives of the City of Tallahassee to address gun violence in our community. As we know, gun violence is an epidemic, not only in the state of Florida, but throughout this nation. And there are communities wrestling with this issue everywhere you go. But we have taken a proactive stance in addition to law enforcement and their efforts. And we know that we can't police our way out of violent crime, gun violence in particular. And so we have to take a holistic approach. And that's what the City of Tallahassee has done and has done for a number of years now, starting with programs like our Tempo Program that Dr. Thomas, as an individual, going out into the community, reaching out to young people, 18 to 24 years of age, who might have had a scrape with the law but sought to turn their lives around. And he, in fact, worked with them. We've seen that program grow over the years and be tremendously successful. We've seen no We've seen no recidivism of the young people that we have worked with and graduated through that program. We have our Tallahassee Future Leaders Academy, which started out as a summer youth employment program to give our young people during the summer months an opportunity to be employed, to keep them occupied and off the streets, because we know an idle mind is the workshop of you-know-who. And so we have had that program for a number of years. It has now been expanded to be a year-round program, keeping, again, youth employed and occupied and giving them an opportunity to financially assist their parents and to learn some job skills that they may be able to use when they graduate from high school. A year ago, it was, I believe, we dedicated $1 million over the next five years in cooperation with Cajum, the Capital Area Justice Ministry. We allocated $1 million over the next five years for addressing gun violence in our community, specifically through the restorative justice program at our teen center. Secondly, was Crime Stoppers, where people who may see or hear crimes being committed in the community, rather than be afraid to call in and report those crimes, they're able to anonymously contact Crime Stoppers, and there's a financial reward if, in fact, it leads to an arrest and adjudication of guilt. And thirdly, $500,000 annually is allocated towards programs such as what we see being recommended for funding now, that will reach out to young people in our community, hopefully at an early age. What we what we ideally would want to see is prevention. Those programs that work with young people, we were at the check dedication just yesterday, where the legislature approved $250,000 for the lamplighters, Omega Lamplighters program, a program that reaches young people preventively, not intervening once they've had scrapes with the law, but preventing them from ever being associated with that kind of behavior and activity. And so that's what this funding is for, and so we hope to see long-term results. We know it's not going to happen overnight. We won't come back here next year and the violent crime issue be solved in our community. But I did want to express what we have done as a city. I know that our police department, in addition to that, and our fire department, I've been watching their activities on Facebook. They have been going out into the schools and interacting and interfacing with our young people as another intervention approach or prevention approach. So the City of Tallahassee has been very proactive in its efforts and attempts to address this issue in our community, and we hope and pray that in the long term, our efforts will result in a reduction of the crime and violence that we've seen in our community, working, of course, with other community-based and faith-based organizations as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
For option number one?
Option number one, the citizen review team recommendation.
I would second that motion.
There's a second to the motion. Commissioner Matler, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank Ms. Morell and your team and everybody putting this together on and off cycle. And I know, so this funding that we allocated starting in the next CHSP cycle, it's going to just be a part of the normal cycle process? Okay, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to say thank you. I am most impressed with the work that went into doing this and looking at the diversity of the organizations and the diversity of the committee that made this this happen. I am most encouraged as well about the education for the third through fifth graders. And for what the Tallahassee Urban League has listed here is to provide assistance for school age, because we do know that third grade is not where it starts, because we've had some gun violence in our community of little ones who are not even school age. And so I appreciate the fact that we're going to start here and we're going to continue to grow. And so I'm very pleased at where we're heading, where this is a great start, and I look forward to other organizations joining this effort to help us reach our goal of snubbing out gun violence. I know Commissioner Richardson said we're not going to come back next year, and it's going to be over. I'm going to pray that it does happen. I know we will hopefully see some reduction, but I would love to love for us to come back, and we found a cure. But I know that, you know, you, you know, you got to start, you know, a journey of a thousand miles starts with the first step. So thank you all for what you've done in this short period of time to get these dollars, like you said, on the street. You heard us clearly. Let's get this money on the street, and so we thank you for that. And thank you, Dr. Thomas, for the tempo. This is another way we're picking up the tempo. We're getting them on the front end instead of getting them on the other end when they're older. So thank you all very much for what you're doing in our community to try to do our part to make us whole. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. See no further comments. All those in favor of the motion on the table for staff recommendation made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the mayor pro temp, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it passes four to zero with Commissioner Porter recusing herself. Item twelve point oh three. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly pleased to seek your approval of this next item. Let me invite Steve Schaefer and Dave Roberts to come forward.
We're going to come back under commission, under our discussion time and talk about the process.
Okay, I would really love to just talk about it now.
We're going to come back after the next three items, and then we're right there with sharing of ideas and spend as much time. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, sir. This item seeks your approval of a resolution to submit a loan application for approximately $9 million to the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Loan. This involves the eradication of lead and copper in our water systems. For many, many years, our our water utility has worked to remove lead pipes from the distribution system. It was common at one time in distribution systems around the country, and they've done a great job of doing that, and there's all but a small amount that that may still remain. However, there are older homes and businesses that still may have these kind of fixtures, and this provides access to funding of approximately $9 million to deal with that. About half of this would be forgivable in a form of a forgivable loan, and the other half in terms of a 0% interest loan over a 10-year period. With your approval, the Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure Department will submit a loan application with DEP to receive authorization for the funding. And this is just another example of kind of forward-looking investment in our systems, looking past our infrastructure and all the way down the line into homes to keep people safe. Steve Schaefer, our General Manager of Underground Utilities, is here, as well as Dave Roberts, Assistant General Manager, to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we have no speakers on twelve oh three.
Okay, let's move forward. Mayor Pro Tem?
I move for a staff recommendation.
Excellent. All right, staff recommendations made by Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Coming back to the mayor pro temp for comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to take this opportunity to say, first of all, we want to always apply for money. But there's been a lot in the news lately, Mr. City Manager and Mayor, about our drinking water and spillage and things like that. Can you just take this opportunity, perhaps, Mr. City Manager, to bring us up to speed and up to, you know, where things are, what happened, who did it, why, when?
Yeah.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Steve Schaefer, again, our General Manager of that department, this is a great opportunity. I think this does go hand in glove. That was our wastewater system, but all of these systems take the same approach in terms of long-term planning, maintenance. But in this case, and I would love for Steve to be able to share the response, so when something does happen that's unplanned and unexpected, how do you address it? And so there's a lot of pieces into it. Steve, would you mind giving us a current status update?
Sure. Thank you, Reese, and thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I really appreciate the opportunity providing an update. As you are aware, on October 1st, we had a situation where we had a failure in one of our four main pipes on Capital Circle, and we attacked this from several different directions, from stopping the flow to repairing the damage, mitigating impact to the public and the environment, providing notice and reporting, and then ultimately determining the cause. So I'll just take a few seconds to give you the status of each one of those.
Thank you.
Sure. Stopping the flow, within 15 minutes of the notice that we got, our pump station operators were out, starting to do the work that they need to do to isolate the flow from from that system. And that is a, it's a process. There's 7 million gallons a day typically that flows through this particular pipeline. It's almost 40% of the flow of Tallahassee flows through there. So it has to be done very systematically, and that's exactly what happened. It required the manipulation of 10 different valves in a very specific order in order to make sure you don't overwhelm other portions of the system. So that was done within two hours. We were able to completely isolate that line. While we do that, we also have to carefully monitor the impact to those other systems that we redistribute that flow to, and one way we do that is we mobilize back trucks, bypass pumps, and even emergency septic colors that we have under contract at different strategic locations through the system to make sure that if we see issues, that we can address them immediately. So as I said, because of the redundancy in the system that allows us to do those bypass operations, within two hours, we had the flow shut off. Next step, obviously, is for us to start taking a look and see what, work on fixing it, you know, finding a way to repair it. So in that case, what we do is, this this line happens to be in Capital Circle, and it's about 10 feet deep, required the excavation of a very large trench to get down to see exactly what the failure was, what type of equipment and materials we might need to replace it. When we saw this, we knew that this was a significant impact to traffic in the area. So our goal was quickly getting that repaired and giving us the opportunity to restore traffic as quickly as possible. So in order to do that, it required that our staff work through the night, and they did, and it's what they do. At the same time, we had to coordinate to make sure we had an asphalt provider that could provide asphalt so that we could patch that trench as early as we could in the morning. So we had them on standby for six in the morning, have asphalt ready to go. All that being said, even though the extent of this work required as much work as it did, by midday on Monday, we completely repaired the pipe and restored traffic to alleviate traffic concerns in the area. Another line that we're looking at while this is going on is looking at the environmental impact assessment. So in this case, impacts were actually contained in a couple of stormwater facilities in Evening Rose and in our Weems Road Stormwater, enhanced stormwater facility, gave us a really good opportunity. So in Evening Rose, we were able to go in there and actually recover the spill volume from those ponds. The the community, the Evening Rose HOA and the school were very gracious with us, allowed us to get in there and do what we needed to do. We started recovering that Sunday afternoon, and by Tuesday, we completed both recovering all of the spill in that area and disinfecting, deodorizing the area around the ponds. A portion of this also flowed over to the Weems Road facility. This is actually a nationally recognized facility that uses advanced technology to treat stormwater. It's designed to treat 130 million gallons a day before it then moves downstream toward Upper Lake Lafayette. That technology was extremely effective on addressing the impacts of the spill to the point where, through that treatment, we never exceeded state standards for water quality downstream from that facility. So it did a great job of protecting our recreational waters. There's also a communication plan that we have to implement anytime something like this happens. Y'all are aware of the DEP established clear reporting requirements in accordance with state statutes, and they require that within 24 hours, we contact them with a call to the State Watch Office. We submit the information that we have within that 24 hours to DEP through the Public Notice Pollution Portal. Then we follow up with an email to DEP, DOH, and in this case, Northwest Floor Water Management District, because it also impacted our MS4 situation. After that first day's notice, we provide follow-ups every day to that group with additional details and with the results of water quality sampling. On that first day, we weren't able to report the estimated volume of the spill. That takes some time as, when we have this kind of spill in this situation, there's a lot of data we have to go over, but we were able on Monday then to provide them our estimate of the flows. The, sorry. The communications that, in addition to the regulatory communications, we identify those areas, people, businesses, agencies that are most directly impacted by the spill. In this case, we knew the traffic was a big impact, so we reached out directly to FDOT to let them know what was going on. We reached out to area businesses who may have been impacted by lane closures the following day. We reached out to Evening Rose HOA because of the impact of their pond and to the the school, the other pond that, for the school that was also impacted, and for commuters through our road closure notices. So all those folks we knew may have to make plans based on the spills. We reached out directly to them and walked them through the process. Water quality sampling is always required when we have the potential of impacting our service waters. We coordinate with DEP to establish the locations of that sampling, and we're required to continue it every day until such time as those samples show that the water quality reaches state standards again. In this case, with the spill being on Sunday, by Tuesday, the sampling showed that the results had once again achieved back to basically meeting state standards, where it allowed to cease sampling after that point, which really shows you, while these are big impacts, and especially in the public that certainly understand the concern, very short timeframe as far as the actual impacts to the environment. Finally, while all of that is now complete, we have ongoing work, because one of the big questions we always ask is, what happened? Why did this happen? So in every case, regardless of the size of the spill, I'm still, I'm sorry.
Brody and slip.
Yes, it was. We perform what we call root cause analysis, and we go in there to look to see what happened to the best of our ability to determine that, to make sure that this isn't a systemic problem that we need to address throughout the system as opposed to a unique problem at a specific location. Not always a simple thing to do. We have a very complicated system. We've got over 1,100 miles of pipe underground that is part of our system, 150, that is pressure systems, we call force mains. We've got 113 pump stations with hundreds of individual pumps associated with those pump stations and over 1,500 valves associated with this. So there is a lot of moving pieces. There's, this is a complex system, and there is an opportunity for things to happen. With that being the case, we are able to address those and mitigate those for the most part. Possible factors on any kind of spill would include blockages, and you're familiar when we'd guess, things like oils, greases, rags, tree roots, they can block our service lines and our mains, but there's a lot more that our folks have to deal with that impact our lines that would surprise you. Our folks have found engine parts in these lines. They've they've found conveyor belts, fence panels. So there's a lot of stuff in this that the system has to be able to basically tolerate. We have to stay on top of, and we do a great job. Other than those, we know that power outages, pressure fluctuations, excessive flows, material defects, third-party damage, all potential causes and all the things that we need to look at as we go through the process. We are still performing that. We've ruled out some things. We have determined there wasn't third-party damage, that were not excessive flows. We haven't seen excessive pressures in the system, so we will be looking at other things, pipe materials, pipe defects, and other causes, and we'll just run this to the ground until we determine to the best of our ability what the issue was. So those are kind of where we are in those things. I'd like to just take a real quick second to recognize I'd like to just take a real quick second to recognize the outstanding work of our team. We had over two dozen folks that on Sunday were planning like everybody else for church or football, whatever, and when they got the call on 9:40, those plans were put aside, and it was go time. And this is what they do, and this is who they are, and we're very much appreciative. I happened to run into a citizen who abuts the pond in Evening Rose where we were collecting the spill from, and I asked her, was she comfortable with the response with everything going okay in her mind? She would have been the one, if anybody who could have said, you impacted me, this is negative, this is horrible. She couldn't stop talking about the team and how they responded, and in the communication that was ongoing throughout that. That made me exceptionally proud. I very much want to say that the community's lucky to have these professionals backing them up every day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Steve. I bet you're the life of the party, because you can really break it down, what went down. So if anybody, you did a great job in the media, I watched you speak to it, speak to the issue, and I wanted to hear more about how this happens. And I too want to applaud the efforts of the personnel who did this work. These are true professionals. I saw pictures of folks way down underground and, you know, breaking up asphalt, down in the trenches, down to where it happens. And so I want to also say thank you to you, to your team, to you and your team. Are any of them here?
We do have a few of them here.
Okay, if it's okay, if they could just stand, so we can... Thank you all, thank you all for what you do time and time again, every time there is an occurrence of something like this. At my house, when a pipe burst, I gotta call the plumber. But in the city of Tallahassee, when a pipe burst, we have a team that comes in and fixes. So thank you all for what you're doing. Thank you.
If I may, I would tell you, our folks don't do this for recognition, but those kind of comments mean a lot to them, and I'll make sure that I pass that back to them, and they will appreciate it as well.
Mr. Mayor.
The team did a great job just to follow up, and I'll come to you in just a second.
Including the one, the other one named John Daly.
I was about to say, the picture you referenced is, well, I think, wasn't that John that was on the?
John was on the excavator, yes.
Tell them, tell them how much, and the entire team, how much we appreciate it. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to, Steve, express my appreciation for the work that you all do. It's not glamorous work, it doesn't happen at certain times of the day, it happens whenever a need is there, and you're right there on the spot to respond. You did an excellent job. We were briefed as quickly as possible, so we were on, we meaning the commission, and I'm sure other staff, were briefed on what was happening almost minute by minute, or whenever there was significant information provided to us so that we could then share that with our constituents and neighbors. And so I want to commend you all for the work that you do, and I'm particularly attuned to it as well, because I think it was maybe a couple of years ago, we had a similar incident in my neighborhood, at an intersection in our neighborhood that blocked ingress and egress onto my part of the street. And I can tell you, the staff was knowledgeable, they were professional, and they worked in a very timely fashion as they did on this incident. And so this didn't just start yesterday. This is something that our staff has been doing for at least the time that I can tell you, we had the incident in my neighborhood until now, and we certainly appreciate you all for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Seeing no further comment, motion on the table for staff recommendation approval made by...
Yes, move, Mr. Mayor.
We already have a motion on table. Yeah, made by Mayor Protem, and I believe you are the second on that. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passage unanimously 5-0. We are on item number 12.04. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 1204 is an update on your charter review process. This is something that you have discussed over several meetings in recent months. Most recent activity in this regard was September 27th. The city attorney provided an education session open to the public here in chambers. That also has been recorded and made available. There also was put up a survey or opportunity for public input immediately before or after that education session so that those dovetailed, and we have received information from about 30 respondents on that. I had the opportunity to provide that to each of you. And so tonight, though, this item follows an earlier action where you asked for a set of bylaws to come back to you in October. It is now October. That same action said that once you approve bylaws, you would then, 60 days subsequent to that approval, appoint members to the committee. So what has been attached to the item is a draft set of bylaws. Draft includes a few things. One is just components that are common to our city advisory boards and committees so that there's a normal way of operating. There are a few provisions about attendance, a quorum, virtual participation, and then, as it's stated, there's a provision for the charter review committee to meet and provide a report within 90 days. On a couple of those things, I do want to point out things to consider before we get to the action at the end of your discussion. As this is drafted, it says that there may be opportunity for a committee member to participate in a meeting virtually or by telephone, but it identifies that virtual participants would not be able to vote on a given item. That's not necessarily a preference of staff, just making sure that we have something there that covers that. I think our thought was limited time, specific purpose, people would be able to meet in person, but if you, and if you wanted virtual participation, that would also limit places that meetings could be held. There are only one or two city facilities that have that capability, so that's why that was put there that way. Another item in the timeline, as it's written, it says within 90 days of appointment. Again, no particular preference there that was put there as a marker. Something that I did think about subsequent to the agenda being published is if you did approve 90 days from appointment, and say you appointed members at your December meeting, then that effectively would leave 60 days for them to do their work. If you point them in December, they're going to meet in January, so that leaves them just February and March. So I just want to make sure that as we get to a decision point that we're thoughtful on the time. And then the last thing, and I think this piece I didn't think to mention when I briefed you, we've suggested that with a committee of 10 members, that six votes be required to pass an item, so that gets away from the issue of a 5-5 vote. Again, as written, six votes would be required, so that if you had eight people in attendance, the bylaws still provide, you would need six votes. So if you don't want it to work that way, let us know, and we can make it say that a majority of votes are, use the language that you wish. So with those pieces of information, I'll tell you that the things that would be needed to complete the bylaws are a definition of the function, which includes that scope and purpose, something specific that says this is what you would like the charter review committee to look at. And then with that settled, then I would think the second item you would want to be sure you address is the timeline, which obviously could be affected by what you're asking them to do. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do have one speaker. May I go ahead and take that one? That is Stanley Sims.
Thank you. I'm still at the same location with the same beautiful woman. I want to say, Mayor, I want to say hats off to our treasurer clerk and also our city attorney. I attended that workshop on the 27th. It was very informative, again, like the treasurer clerk just broke down. Here are some issues of concerns that I have, Mayor, and it goes to some of my comments that I made last night to the county commission. I have two properties, one on McKissick Road, another one just behind Buck Lake Elementary. Now, my property on McKissick Road, the owner prior to me was on Talcum. My father-in-law, God bless him, who lived next to him, is on Talcum. When I tried to move my house there, they require that I go to city, God bless her soul as she rests in heaven. Hey Zella, explained to me that Talcum owns the lines and leases them to the city of Tallahassee. They try to get to where I'm going is, that's representation without taxation. Let me give you an example of the dilemma that I'm incurring right now that I share with the county administrators. I have two dead trees in my backyard threatening my house. In your current energy program of public safety, if I was inside of the city, I could apply for a loan program to get those trees down. Well, I can't do that because geographically, I'm not in the city. Where am I going? When you look at the definition of individuals that are able to participate in the charter review process, I'm asking that you guys would consider the same language that we use when we look upon establishing boards, whether you live or work or connected in some kind of way to the city that you can demonstrate. It's challenging for us, Mr. Mayor, because I worked to help establish with Bob Seavy the program, you know, to help you buy washers, dryers, and we added generators and things. And so I'm not kicking this program at all, I applaud it. I'm just concerned I can't participate in it. And these are one of the challenges that we face when we are a customer of yours, but we have no voting power, and we don't have any say power. And then we move to situations of, that when we first started discussing this, it pushed us to deregulation, because at first, the county wanted to charge us if, you know, if who used the park and where you live. So I just wanted to just kind of bring, I apologize, but I was saying some good stuff there.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
That's the only speaker on the item, Mayor.
Madam Protem, you're the one that brought this item before us originally, although I am extremely interested in it myself. I'll defer to you for comments first.
All right, thank you. And thank you to Madam Attorney, as I said last week, for providing the education that was needed. Thank you to the treasurer clerk for the work that's being done to get us in position. And thank you to the city manager and his staff for putting the survey out. And as you heard the treasurer clerk say there, we've had about 30 respondents, because I wanted to make sure that I got, we got community engagement. And so I am, and thank you for providing us with the results of those, because I had heard some conversation from citizens, city residents, who were interested in us looking at a chart, looking at the charter review, and some of the issues that they had. And I did not want to publicly say what I wanted to focus on until I knew better what our citizens, our residents were interested in. And so based on the results of what we've received thus far, city residents are interested in having a say on how many seats we have on the commission. And the majority of the ones who responded have indicated the number of seats that they like to see to remain here. They also are interested in keeping the seats at large, the majority of the ones responding want to keep the seats at large. They also, the majority of the respondents also agree that the work of this city commission is full-time work. Perhaps once upon a time, it was part-time, but that was before we became 200,000-plus residents, and along with all the other issues that have become our issues, or, you know, whatever reasons they have become our issues. They've also indicated that they're not interested in having a primary election if there are only two candidates in a race, that it should go straight to the general, because remember, these seats are nonpartisan. And then the final question that they responded to was that they would be interested in overwhelmingly amount, be interested in having a charter review with every, at least every 10 years. So based on the responses received from the public, these are issues that I too would like for us to proceed with, to focus on as a part of our charter review.
If I am hearing you correctly, in defining a scope, you want to have the charter review commission concentrate on the size of the commission, for lack of a better term, the method of elections? And what was the, you had a third?
The method of elections in making the seats, the city commission seats full-time.
Oh, full-time, okay.
That are part-time.
Okay. I'll second that if that's a motion for scope.
It is.
Okay. Any other further comment?
Also add the review of the charter, being every 10 years, at least every 10 years.
Oh, and CRC every 10 years, okay. Commissioner Porter.
Would you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, would you mind just repeating those?
Sure. So to define the scope, four points.
Jim, did you jot those down?
I did.
It might be easier for him to read what he wrote.
Thank you, Mayor. Items identified were to address the size of the city commission, the method of election of city commissioners, whether the position of city commission should be full-time, and a review of the charter on a 10-year cycle. One item that I would like to ask was not part of the items that have been named, but Commissioner Williams Cox did mention the primary, when only two candidates, I didn't know if she was...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that method of...
That was part of the election.
Correct.
Got it.
So size of commission, method of elections, full-time consideration of commissioners, and an every 10-year cycle for CRC review.
And as well as, the method of election would also be keeping the position, these seats at large, as opposed to single-member district.
Okay.
That's based on the results of what we received. 72% wanted to keep them at large.
All right, Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying, I'm a little confused on the scope. If the overwhelming is the seats remain at five and the seats remain at large, do we need to, are we trying to have them valid? That's not a change to the charter, that would just be the status quo. Maybe we remove those items for all, status quo is fine, and just focus on the other three. Would be my first thought, and my second thought would be, having done this for two months, we didn't really get that many responses. We didn't really get that many people who showed up for the city attorney's presentation. So I'm really not seeing an overwhelming need from the public or desire of the public to even go down this path. So I mean, I think there may be a better path, where we just take a step back for nine months to a year, let organic community conversations happen, if they happen, table this until we actually have more of an idea of where people want to see our city go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I found the survey responses interesting. I do, and I do think it's important to say, though, that 29 people responded to the survey. You know, I mean, that's pretty, I think we should keep that in context. I agree, I mean, I guess I'm curious, you know, what problem are we exactly trying to fix here by going down this route? I'm not opposed to tabling this. I do feel very strongly that it would be my preference, in the interest of public participation, that this not, that if we do decide we want to move forward, this is the purpose and scope, that at the very least, that not be formally approved until our next meeting. I think we know from experience that oftentimes, the public are paying attention or learn about something, you know, once the decision has been made. I don't think it's too much, too much of a delay to, at the very least, wait to, you know, put this on our next agenda before we formally... you know, put this on, on our next agenda before we formally approve the scope, if that's the direction we go in. I also think we could consider having a, a workshop ourselves where we discuss this. I'm not sure this is the best forum. I mean, you know, even the, I, I think the questions that we, that were on the survey were appropriate or, you know, were reasonable. I didn't, I did not think that these were the questions we had agreed to include in the survey. I thought it was going to be open-ended and certainly not yes or no answers. I mean, I see in one of the responses, they wish there had been an undecided option. You know, a lot of people don't even understand, don't know enough necessarily to, to vote yes or no. We've talked about this already, you know, just how far-reaching the consequences of making certain decisions like changing our charter can have. I think we all take that very seriously, you know, the unintended consequences which could have major, major impacts. So I also, depending on where we, where we want to go, have, have other things that, you know, we might want to consider, we might consider looking into. So those are some of my thoughts. I think that I might, I think that I might, you know, make a substitute motion then that we, that we do table this, that we table this discussion. I'm just not seeing an overwhelming need or desire for this at this time. So I think that I would, you know, I would like to have that conversation. So I'll make that motion that we, that we table having a, a charter review commission at this time.
Commissioner Porter has made a motion that we table the charter review commission item at this time. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. It has been properly seconded. I intend to fully vote against the substitute motion on the table for several reasons. Number one, it is not a surprise to me, Commissioner Matlow and Porter, that you two want to vote against the charter review. You've made it very clear on social media that you are not in favor of this charter review commission and moving forward. So I appreciate your comments. I am in favor. This is standard practice across municipal governments and county governments across the United States. Every 10 years, you take a look at your charter, your constitution, make sure that it fits the bill. No decisions are being made until any recommendations might come out of a charter review commission, that any recommendations that might come out of charter review commission that we decide to put on a ballot for referendum, and then everyone, full democracy, has the opportunity to participate. I think this is healthy. I am very interested in having a charter review commission look at the question of number of seats on the city commission. And you know what? They might come back and say, five is the right number. They also might come back and say, three's the right number, or seven's the right number, or 300's the right number. We don't know until we look. I am interested in having the question of the method of elections be looked at, just to make sure that we are maximizing voter participation in all of our elections. I mean, we have been through this exercise once before. Commissioner Richardson, you remember, municipal elections actually used to be in the spring, way back when. But through a charter review commission, the recommendation was actually to move it to the fall elections to fall in line with gubernatorial and presidential. So it is not uncommon for us to actually look at the method of elections as well. As for the other two items that have been recommended under scope, wholeheartedly look forward to having them be reviewed by a citizen committee. So I am not going to support the substitute motion to table. I am ready to move forward. And in fact, Mayor Pro Tim, your motion really kind of dives into recommended action, number one, which is to define the function and the scope. But I'm also here to tell you that I'm very comfortable with the timeline. By allowing the charter review commission to operate under the timeline as it's being presented, they get to work in January. That's plenty of time for us to take into consideration anything that we might want to put on the ballot that comes out of it and have it be placed on the ballot for next year's cycle. I am comfortable with the bylaws as being proposed as well. And the application process, we each get to a point in being able to move forward. So I look forward to not only supporting your, your original motion, but also the other recommended actions that will come before us on this item as well. I saw Commissioner Porter's seen first, and then Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if I, I mean, could offer a compromise that we, that we at the very least not, I really want to see the public respond to what is within the scope. I just feel like we see it time and time again, and it's just the natural course of things. You know, a news story's published, this is the scope, this is the purpose, and it gives them an opportunity to respond. I just think that's the best practice. I would just feel more comfortable if we, if we could reach that compromise.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, no matter how, how hard we try, we're not going to fit 300 commissioners up here on the dais. Secondly, I mean, I think the issue, the idea to table it is so we can get more feedback, Mr. Mayor. It was you just a year ago, when the ethics board made recommendations, that said you would want to consider what the ethics board wanted to look at in, in regards to lobbyists. I mean, some of those are on the form that was submitted to us, but all of a sudden the ethics recommendations are off the table and we haven't even unpacked that conversation. That's troubling to me. It just seems like, from what I'm seeing and from what I'm hearing you say, is, is what you're looking for is what we're hearing on right-wing radio, which is we need a district, our, our city commission. And what that's going to do is have tremendous impacts on minority representation on this board. That's what people want to do. They want to draw this community into districts to shift the balance of representation on this board. So I'm not interested in a backdoor tactic that's going to change the representation up here, because frankly, it's working. I'm in the minority, and I can tell you that it's working, the voting, voting minority. So I don't know where the problem there is, especially when we see the majority of the people who responded to the survey also want to see us, us keep it. So I don't understand why that's in. I don't understand why the ethics proposals are being removed. I don't understand why the changes to the offices of the mayor aren't being considered when they were requested in the survey. It seems we're picking and choosing a very set function to, to focus. So either let's expand this thing, let it, let's have true public input and let the board be able to take ideas along the way, so it's a fair and open process. And because we're here today, there was one public speaker, but we've had 10 public speakers come and say they want us to put a ballot initiative for ethics reform. So we know they're not here yet, but they will be here, and they'll be very upset when we're moving forward with this, this limited scope. So either we table it, take a step back, get this right when we get there, I mean, spend a couple more months focusing it, dialing it in, getting it right, or, or just expand the whole thing and give them enough time to work through it. Give them six months to work through it. That's my thoughts.
Mayor Pro Tim on the substitute, and then I'm, I'm going to be ready to take some votes and move forward.
I was going to say, I'm, I'm ready to move on to deal with the substitute on the table.
Okay. Substitute motion on table is to table the item. All those in favor of the substitute motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
And the motion fails two to three with Commissioner Richardson, Williams Cox, and Daley in dissent. We are back on the original motion on the table, which again, Madam Mayor Pro Tim, has defined recommendation option one, which is scope and purpose. We can keep it separate. We can.
I, I did that for clarity, but, you know, I didn't know if we were going to take them one at a time. I'm, I'm fine with men in the motion to have all of those. I think Commissioner Richardson wanted to say something, and then I wanted to say something before we move on with this.
Sure.
Okay. Commissioner Richardson.
I, I just wanted to make sure I heard, I voiced my concerns, and Commissioner Matlow, thank you for coming to the table very late on the single-member district issue. It's personal to me because that's how my political career started, when the NAACP, under the leadership of the late Anita Davis, and I went to the school board to request, and they agreed that we go to single-member districts, because at the time African-Americans could not get elected to, to county-wide office here in Tallahassee. That was preceded by a suit filed by the NAACP and the late Anita Davis against Leon County for the very same reason. So we've been dealing with that for a long time, and I have mentioned it from this dais. So for what it's worth. So I just want to clarify, Mayor Pro Tim, that that issue will not be put on the table because I do have concerns with that issue if that's what's being considered here.
Right. I, I, and I understand your concern. What I'm doing, what, what I've reported out on is what the, the results from the, the survey provided, and there did not seem to be any interest in doing single-member districts based on the folks who responded to the survey. And I want to say this, if I, if, if that's, if you're, if you're done.
No, I had one, I did have another point. I, I wanted to ask, in, in the conversation that I had with our inspector general and slash auditor, there were some issues that we discussed, and I would like for him, if he would come forward and talk about some of the issues from his perspective that we might want to consider if we move forward with this item.
Mr. Inspector General.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson and City Commission. The major issue that I have with the, not an issue, but the concerns that I have with the way the current charter is set up for the city auditor. The charter says there shall be a city auditor. In 2020, the city commission directed me to develop an office of inspector general. So based on the way the charter is organized now, I serve as both the inspector general and the city auditor. It's not a clear definition as to what the role of the appointed official of city auditor is. What we've done is we've created an ordinance to establish the inspector general, and the charter establishes a city auditor. So, so the authority, role, responsibility of the inspector general is split between charter and ordinance, unlike the other appointed officials whose roles are clearly defined in the charter. And that's an issue that I would like to be addressed if this charter review committee goes forward. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tim.
The inspector general has mentioned that in our, in our briefings, and I think, I'm, I'm trying to remember, we've had, if, have, if I've had any conversation with you, Madam Attorney, or the clerk about how that could be handled.
Madam Attorney.
We did not specifically speak about the issue presented by the inspector general, but I do think it is a concern, and certainly the placement of the inspector general in the charter is, is a matter that needs to be dealt with.
And is that something that the charter review committee would need to address and be put on a ballot, or is that something since we've already made this action, would be cleanup in the charter to address it?
When I construed the duties of the inspector general, I construed them as duties that flow from the auditor general's responsibilities. So I think it is appropriate that he serve as the inspector general, but the elevation, the question is, do you want to elevate that to, to the charter as an official position? Because now any commission could take that away.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Attorney.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all I had.
Excellent. Thank you.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, I want to say this. Every person who takes the time to participate in anything that we offer is important.
Right.
And what their, what their opinions are, are important. These were all advertised. I, as a commissioner, made sure that I shared it and put it out there for those who were interested in doing it. We all could have done that. I led this effort for public engagement. I'm the one who came and asked, let's do this survey so that we can get public input. Any one of us could have taken this survey, we could have gone and done whatever it is that we wanted to do, and the survey is still out there. It's not, it can still be used. And what it will be used for is to further provide input that will then go to the charter review committee and inform this commission of what citizens are thinking. Public engagement has not ended. It can still, it can still happen.
And citizens will be able to participate in every single step of the way.
Citizens, this is, this is, we can't do this without citizens.
That's right.
Okay. And there are a lot of things that have happened, that have changed in 14 years, you know. So how much longer should we wait? We say we'll grow our city, we say we'll progress this city. Well, how can we be when our charter is, has not been updated substantively for the past 14 years? So I look forward to whatever the public decides that they want us to consider, but what, I understand the process. It goes to the charter review, they come back with recommendations, and this commission will determine that. So this is not, like, this is our final bite at the apple, but delaying and dragging our feet does not get us to where we need to go. We're the capital city of the third-largest state in the union, and I think that we ought to be able to handle a charter review.
Absolutely. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering, Madam Attorney, to the question about the role, responsibility, and authority of the inspector general, that, would that, I mean, I understand what you just said about if we wanted to give permanence to the position, but regarding the role and responsibilities and authority, is that something that could be changed without a charter, a change to the charter?
It could be changed now without the charter because it, it's, it's an ordinance.
Okay.
So it could be changed by you, just as you created, that the inspector general gave him additional duties, the auditor additional duties as the inspector general. That, that could be done. The issue regarding duties and responsibilities, I suppose, would be, as I said, to elevate it to a charter responsibility and thus making it more difficult to change those responsibilities.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yeah, to provide clarity on that, we are bound by charter for the treasurer clerk to perform his duties. We, we can't say, hey, stop doing your, your duties unless we take that to the citizens for a vote. I think what the inspector general is saying, he, he doesn't have that at all. If, if a new commission comes around and doesn't want an inspector general, we wouldn't have one anymore. Or if that was what the will of that body was. So do we want the inspector general position to be put into the charter to make sure that it sticks around? I think that's a valid question to, to ask the public. And I, I think I'd, I'd consider the motion on the table if we included that question. I'd consider the motion on the table if we considered the recommendations by the ethics board previously and the other recommendations on the survey. Would we be, Madam, would you be willing to add those to the scope?
I am not familiar with, I did see the comment, but I'm not familiar with the ethics review, the, the ethics board recommendation that you're referring to to be added to the charter. Because, and I, I, you know, I'm, I'm just not real clear on where, where that takes us, where we go. The ethics board was formed out of the charter. And if, so what, what, what are we saying we, we're trying to do with the ethics board that they don't currently have the ability to do?
Mr. Mayor, there are recommendations that came out of the ethics board that they approached us and wanted us to take a look at. It was applied by the city attorney. What they were looking at is actually a change in scope to what was initially voted on. So that would actually have to go before the voters to, to give them that. So I.
And we acted on that. As a commission, we acted on that.
That's right.
We, well, but I think that at the time it was, unless we do a full charter review commission, we're not going to take this up piecemeal, Mr. Mayor. I think that was your phrasing. So I'd say, let's include that too. I'm not saying we have to adopt those, but let them review the ethics board's recommendations as well, as well as the inspector general position.
Madam, Mayor Pro Tim, I'm ready to move forward with your motion. I'm here to tell you I support the motion as is. I am not interested in having the ethics, I'm perfectly comfortable with the ethics board in the charter as is right now. Well, last comment, Commissioner Porter, then we're going to get a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if the, the maker of the motion would consider including as well, including the role, responsibility, and authority of the inspector general, if that's something we want to, to elevate and, and flesh out. I'm also interested in hearing the committees, the committees and the public's thoughts on having an appointed police chief. I'm also interested in clarifying some questions. I'm also interested in clarifying some questions about who is, are the custodian of records. Records have changed a lot. They're digital, they're on platforms and databases. I think that that's another, I mean, issue that I see other cities looking into and something that I would suggest that we consider as well.
Any comment? Mayor Protim?
Thank you, Commissioner Porter, but I think we need to proceed with what we have.
Okay. There's a, Commissioner Matlow, I'm going to go ahead and call for the motion, and then we've got a series of other motions regarding this item, and my screen just went blank, that need to be dealt with. So the motion on the table was made by the Mayor Protim. I seconded the motion. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
And it passes 3-2 with Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Porter in dissent. I'm going to come, what am I doing here? There we go. Okay, so we still need to approve a timeline, the bylaws, and, you know, we'll start accepting applications that we can all take a look and appoint. So any comments on timeline and bylaws? Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think as part of the bylaws, we should incorporate the recommendations of the independent Ethics Board, as well as the Inspector General. I move that we include as part of the scope within the bylaws, reviewing suggestions made by the independent Ethics Board and the Inspector General.
Second.
Yeah, there's a motion on the table to readdress the scope that we just passed to include the Ethics Board and Inspector General, signed by Commissioner Porter. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Nay.
The motion fails, 2-3 with Commissioner Richardson, Commissioner Williams Cox, and the mayor in dissent. Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the timeline as proposed, the bylaws as proposed, and that we approve the acceptance of applications as proposed.
And I will second that.
Okay. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to clarify, would that includes, let me find it, the needing six votes and not a simple majority with the eight quorum?
Well, with a 10-member board, a six-vote majority would be a simple majority because a 5-5 vote would fail.
Right. I guess the question was whether, and help me out, Mr. Treasurer Clerk, because the question was if only eight members are at a meeting, whether they still need six votes, and we want to move forward with that?
No, it is my interpretation that it would be the simple majority of the members present, just like this commission. And if that's not what it is, then we need to make sure that it is a simple majority of the members present, just like we do all of our other commissions and citizens advisory boards. Otherwise, what you can have is four members of the commission that decide never to show up and completely stop the process 100%. It needs to be a simple majority of members present, just like if one of us has to recuse ourselves, now it's a simple majority of four members present. And so that is what I intend to be part of the motion that I made.
Thank you, Mayor. And that's the clarification I think Commissioner Porter was looking for. As it was written, it said it requires six votes. We'll make that adjustment at your direction to, rather than say six votes, to say a majority of the members present.
Correct. Is everybody clear on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Passes 3-2 with Commissioner Matlow and Commissioner Porter in dissent. We are on item number 12.05.
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Commissioner Porter.
I just want to make a comment. I mean, the only, my main concern there was just only, you know, the 90-day period. I feel like that only gives people two months, but we've moved forward. I just wanted the record to show that was my main concern with the bylaws. Thank you.
Okay. We are on item number 12.05. Mr. Sutton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Commission. Item 12.05 seeks your approval for the 2024, the 2024 Annual Audit Plan for the Inspector General's Office. City Commission Policy 104 and Professional Auditing Standards require an annual audit plan be approved by the governing body of the organization. To develop this audit plan, we conducted a comprehensive planning process that involves input from the public, the City Commission, the executive team of the city, department heads, the city audit committee, homeowners associations. A broad, wide net was cast for audit suggestions. Additionally, we conducted a citywide risk assessment where we saw, where we worked with department heads to do a self-assessment of their departments, what risks were there. We did an internal risk assessment within the Inspector General's Office, looking at the risks. And based on those risk assessments, we developed an audit plan. On September 28, the city audit committee met and reviewed our proposed audit plan and recommended the City Commission approve that audit plan. So this agenda item recommends, or asks for your approval for that audit plan.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
All right. Looking down the line.
Move staff recommendation on option one.
Second.
Probably move by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the Mayor Protim. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes, okay, I got you, Commissioner Matlow. Passes unanimously 5-0.
Thank you.
Do we have any other business come before under policy formation and direction?
No, sir.
Okay.
All right. We'll now move to unengaged speakers. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protim. The first speaker we have on unengaged items is Dot Inman Johnson, followed by Douglas Han. As with the earlier portion of our meeting, each speaker has three minutes. I'll give you a heads up at two and a half, as will the light in front of the Mayor Protim.
Dot Inman Johnson, 2121 Trescott Drive, Tallahassee. First of all, for Mr. Mayor, a motion to table is non-debatable. Second, to Commissioner Richardson, since I was the NAACP Political Action Chair with Anita Davis that initiated the single-member and at-large issue at the county commission, because since Reconstruction, there had never been the ability to elect a minority. That is not the case here. Since 1970, there have been minorities elected to the City Commission. And I agree with Commissioner Matlow that I don't know what the urgency is for moving forward with this. Now, the main reason I came to speak was on behalf of the firefighters. The commission said it was so urgent for public safety that we had to, they had to ram a huge property tax increase down the throats of all of Tallahassee residents. That was a huge financial burden for low-income residents of this community. And so, since firefighters are also public safety employees for this government, I want to know why they languish with these low salaries. The police were recently raised their minimum salary to around $60,000. Firefighters who risk their lives every day, running into burning buildings to rescue people and save property, and keep our insurance premiums low with high ratings in Tallahassee, have to have their salaries languish at $44,000 and have that discrepancy. I appreciate you, Commissioner Richardson, for making the comment about their work with the schools, but that didn't just start. They've been doing that for as long as I can remember. And I'm sure, rather than your comment, they would appreciate you showing how much you value them by raising their pay.
Thank you very much.
To a livable wage.
Thank you very much. Certainly appreciate it. Point of clarification, the reason why I allowed debate on that question in conference with the city attorney is that I could tell that there was a ton of interest in speaking, including Commissioner Porter. You started off with comments on it as well, and I want to make sure that everybody had an opportunity to speak. We run a quasi, quasi Roberts Rules of Order. We don't run a strict Roberts Rules of Order. We ran a strict Roberts Rule of Order. As the chair, I would actually have the opportunity to decide whether to entertain motions or not. But we don't. We run a quasi. So I want to make sure we have plenty of participation. It's how this government has been operated since I know when, that I can think of. So, okay, our next speaker.
Douglas Han, followed by Harry Brown.
Thank you so much. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Doug Han. I live at 2072 Forest Avenue, Tallahassee, 32303. Thank you, commissioners. I don't want to be here today to talk to you, but I'm here to speak about the arrest of Marcia Urban. I was outraged. Hope that, I'm not in the minority, that most of the citizens here are outraged. I was outraged because of what the state has done, but, or importantly, I'm outraged at the actions of the Tallahassee Police Department with how action was taken. We all know that the warrant was issued on a Tuesday, and a Tallahassee police officer arrested her 2:49 in the morning on a Friday. That was not necessary. Not acceptable. It's part of a pattern. I was going to say that people in front of me here need to exercise their responsibility and supervise the manager, the police chief, and see that these things do not happen again. But I don't hold them responsible. I hold the people in front of me responsible. I cannot express my disappointment. It's been a pattern ever since I've moved to Tallahassee, starting with the Gallagher incident, the arrest of the women of state legislators on this property, firing of the HR director, entire politicization of the use of the police. I am in support of the officers on the beat, on the street, in our neighborhoods, but unfortunately, they're being used for political malfeasance. We need to do something with, I expect you people to take action. As another Quaker, as another Quaker once said, the 18th-century abolitionist John Wolman conduct is more convincing than language. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Harry Brown. Harry Brown, followed by Stanley Sims.
Name and address for the record, please.
Harry Brown, 5431 Crump Road, Tallahassee. I'm here to tell the truth, nothing but the truth. So help me God. At the last commission meeting, Mr. Mayor, you stated that you give all of us the same time to speak. That is not true, because at the last meeting, Mrs. Johnson was speaking 15 to 20 seconds before the green light came on. Since coming to this podium, I have shown you and your illustrious attorney every reason Anita was in gross violation of taking my severance pay. She showed abuse of her power. She demonstrated against me. She discriminated against me because Lou Shelley, the city attorney, stated that she was wrong and that she tried to take all of my money. He even stated that she does not listen to her legal advisors and that she does what she wants to do. She was in violation of the city's severance pay policy that I read to you at the last meeting. She was in violation of my 14th Amendment right when she deprived me of my property of $31,000 severance pay. Lou Shelley stated that everyone else who went out like me got their severance. Attorney Lou Shelley advised me that not to commit a crime against the city of Tallahassee, because if I did, I would lose everything I had worked for. He said, your retirement is made. He said, we know that, we know what they are trying to do to you. She had Tom Cole, the ex-chief of police, have a plainclothes cop run me out of City Hall with a, I better not say run. He followed me out of City Hall with a gun and a fanny pack. All of this was done in violation of my inalienable rights. She even denied me equal opportunity of the law when the white lady who took my place misappropriated funds and was called in and was asked to retire. Now, you have all of the facts. So are you still going to deny me my severance? God put good in all of us.
You're at 20 seconds.
God put good in all of us. Are you not going to use your good to do the right thing? Remember, you have to go through the pearly gates, and you're going to have to see St. Peter. Look, I put my life on the line for 21 years, serving this country, and have to come back home and be cheated the way you and others have cheated me in this country. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please.
Stanley Sims. Mayor, Mr. Sims is the last speaker that I have, unless there's someone else who has not filled out a card.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, still living at the same location with the same beautiful wife. I'm here today because, you can roll your eyes, my wife is beautiful. Now that you, okay, I'm clear. I let that go, but don't touch my wife now. Let me talk. I reclaim my time. I'm at 1320 Avondale Way, and the reason why I'm here, I'm kind of like stuck in that situation where you accuse Commissioner Matlow of, like, he has this, like, he has an obsession. Your chief of staff has an obsession upon me. She's, you can shake your head, Diane, but your Sora, AKA, Miss Cynthia Barber, they have that, I don't know if they send any emojis about me. This is the kind of environment that you have allowed, your city, he's smiling. When they send him the emojis, he likes them. That puts me in a hostile environment, a set-up environment. After the last blueprint meeting, your chief of staff went to the security demanding that they throw me out of the building. I constantly have to monitor what I do and keep proper records and documentation, because if I let things slide, you'll come back in eight months and change it up and make it look way different than what it really had. Now, I'm scheduled to talk with the new HR director, because the last time that your chief of staff did a lot of false allegations towards me, and she secured the service of the city attorney from Quincy to represent her on these lies, they were dismissed by a judge that was appointed by Governor DeSantis. Now, she's again on the same road. When I filed a complaint with the auditor, or the general inspector, or whatever name we want to give him in the charter, or in, in his report, he acknowledged that HR did a very poor job- a very poor job of communicating with me, and he also acknowledged that policies need to be created to address certain, these type incidents. I'm coming to you because you said quiet while you voted on that big showmo wall to, and you spoke to the media at the end. When are you going to speak about this situation with me? This has been going on now for over two years, and silence gives consent. I'm asking you, the city manager has clearly demonstrated he does not like me and will use his power to infringe upon my rights to exercise in this building.
Thank you very much.
My wife has been an employee of this county, I mean, this government, for over 25 years.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sims.
And I'm asking.
I'm asking you to please step down. Your time is up.
And I'm getting ready to sit down, but you interrupted me at the beginning.
Please, your time is up. I'm asking you to please sit down.
And I'm taking my seat.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, please.
No additional speakers.
Okay, great. We are on unagended, excuse me, we are on commission discussion. Commissioner Porter, I'm going to speak, I'm going to start with you. I know that you have several questions going back to agenda item number 12.02 on process, and I want to make sure you have plenty of time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few really basic questions. So I know that we, I believe we allocated $500,000 for this category, and we didn't, we didn't allocate, distribute all of it, I believe it's $390,000. Is that correct? And is there a reason for that? And if so, is there a plan for the remaining $110,000?
Dr. Thomas, let me, I think, I think Dr. Thomas is the right person, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Okay, I do know, Commissioner, generally, the CHSP committee made the recommendation for amounts, and it was less than you have assigned. That money simply stays in the system. I can say that. Does that answer the question?
Yes, yes, that answers that question. Thank you. And I was also just wondering what, kind of what we were thinking exactly with, and I do, I do want to thank, one, I'm happy to see this, I want to thank the volunteers who took the time to be part of the CHSP funding allocation and review. I'm wondering, though, this isn't exactly what I had in mind when we were discussing this item. I mean, I think what we're funding is so important, and I support it, but I had the impression it was going to be a little bit more, I know that prevention can look like many things, but, you know, the trauma and counseling and support for victims, and I want to emphasize how much I support these things, but I was thinking that this might be a little bit different. And I'm wondering if you can, if anyone can speak to how we came to the criteria for this category. I know it was in consultation with the council on the status of men and boys and the Leon County staff. I would have loved to weigh in a little bit on this as well, but I'm wondering if you can just weigh in on that a little bit.
Dr. Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, I think Anita Morell might be the answer at best.
Ms. Morell? Okay.
So yes, Commissioner, you are correct. We did work with the council and also Leon County staff to come up with the criteria. We looked at other programs in other cities and other states and came up with the criteria and the RFP. It is intervention, but again, it's sometimes, like you stated, it kind of blurs lines between intervention and prevention. So the volunteers were, they made a tough decision, and these are the recommendations that they wanted to put forth for those agencies to be funded.
Okay, thank you. That's all for me, for those questions. Along those lines, I know that the county is having a workshop on CHSP, and I've been told that they are committing to increasing their support for CHSP. I know how important that is to the city, how important our nonprofits are, human service providers. I was wondering if we might, if we have plans to have a similar workshop, or if we might have interest in having a similar workshop to the, as the county is having. Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, that's certainly entirely up to the commission. Generally, as it relates to funding, no, I'll break the question apart. Actually, let me ask for some help on this. The city provides, between the city and the county, we're the funders of the CHSP largely. The city provides more funding than the county, generally speaking. Each year when we approach the budget process, so that's when you would designate how much money you would put into the CHSP process, as we've discussed in a prior item, it's become a two-year cycle. So you're kind of making a two-year commitment. You make the appropriation every year, and so what we do in the budget process, which you're well aware of, and I think it's a good reminder, is early in the year, early in the fiscal year, somewhere around February, we'll set the priorities of the commission. And so at that point, that's when you would indicate, hey, we're going to hold the line, we want more funding, we, less funding, whatever the priority is. You kind of separated that out, and with the gun violence, that was a separate category, but now that's been introduced into the process. So that inherently will increase the city's funding of the CHSP, but designated for a particular category. So I think, I think it's a pretty fluid discussion. I think your budget cycle addresses a lot of it. It provides for a good opportunity to kind of consider how much money may be available and how you want to prioritize. My recommendation would be that you consider it as such. We have the city commission retreat that'll come in January, as it does every year. It's a great opportunity to set strategic priorities. We know we'll be reaching the last year of our strategic plan and beginning to look at a renewal of the next five years. So I think your timeline from a budget strategic planning effort in '24 makes a lot of sense. And so those are just my thoughts about, about the question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, or, well, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Manager. My last question is, I was just wondering, I also was, you know, was disturbed to see the arrest of an elderly woman in the middle of the night, and I was wondering if we could speak to kind of what happened there, what's the relationship between just FDLE and the state, and when we execute those warrants? If we could just, I'd like to have a little more background on that, please.
Mr. Manager, is DC Smith going to?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, Commissioner, I think probably a great opportunity, let me ask Deputy Chief Tanya Smith to come forward. She can kind of highlight the process. Of course, numerous law enforcement agencies can issue warrants for arrests. It's not limited to what we do, and just a matter of course, it's our duty to work those warrants. We've got a longstanding process. We do work hundreds of warrants a year, and so there's a refined process. It's not a picking and choosing, and I think Deputy Chief Smith could probably highlight that. Obviously, this issue is about a warrant that was issued by FDLE. It was a state warrant, and then when it touches us, we don't really evaluate whether we believe that to be worthy we serve those warrants. So DC Smith, can you kind of, I think for the public's benefit, we know how it works. I think it'd be helpful to understand our approach to working of various warrants, whatever they may be. If you could maybe share how that process works.
DC Smith, thanks for joining us.
Good afternoon, everybody. So I'm currently over the Criminal Investigations Unit, and our detectives, on average, daily, basically issue warrants. They take the warrants to the state attorney's office for review, and then that warrant then goes to a judge for approval. So in this case, and in most cases, once that warrant is entered into the system, then our officers go to serve it, but, you know, we took an oath to basically, you know, protect the Constitution, state statute, and ordinances, city ordinances. So we don't have a specific time or date when those warrants are actually issued, we just serve them. So if we come into contact with people on a daily basis and they have a warrant, we have an obligation to serve that warrant, and that's what happens. And so in this case, our patrol officers on their, their assigned districts, and so what happens is before their shift or during their shift, they actually will look and see if anybody has warrants in their area. So when they have, you know, some downtime, which they don't have a lot of, they will actually go and look for those warrant people. So in this case, FDLE issued a warrant, and we actually arrested the person.
Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And is, does the officer have discretion to, I understand you're saying that, you know, we execute the warrant, but I mean, we don't, do we not have the discretion to say maybe 3:00 AM, you know, an elderly woman, that this is maybe not the, you know, a nonviolent, we don't, we couldn't have waited six hours?
We don't necessarily know they're not nonviolent. I mean, that warrant, as soon as they have a warrant, right.
Well, I just mean, so you don't know what the warrant's for? You don't know that, that you didn't, we didn't know that it was a, or alleged voter fraud?
Right. You know what the warrant is for, but you don't know what that person's history is, so you can't necessarily say they're going to be violent this time. We've had people that have had a driver's license warrant, and they turn out to be more violent than the person that does, you know, has the frauds.
Right, but.
You just don't never know.
Sure, I know we never know that.
Right.
But we did know that the warrant was not for a violent offense. It wasn't murder or something with firearms. We knew that, right?
They had, they were also on probation, so that's always an issue. So when a person's on probation, they're on probation for a reason, so there's always that charge to.
Sure, and I worked at the Public Defender's Office as a legal assistant for almost two years, so I am familiar with a lot of this. But I guess my main question is just, did we, do we have discretion over when we make an arrest?
No, we don't, because then we would be selective, and you would say, why did you arrest this person during daytime? Why did you arrest that person? When we come in contact with people, we arrest them. But just like the officers, in the course of their days, you know, it could be, you know, they work different shifts. We work 325 days a year, we work 24-hour days. I mean, we're going to come in contact with people in different hours, so, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Malo. Thank you. DC Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A brief comment on that, just my comment. When Donald Trump gets indicted, he gets to arrange a time to come in and get checked into the prison, but when people are caught up in these bogus voter fraud things that were targeted at people to confuse them, it's a 3:00 AM arrest. So our system of justice isn't working equally for the people who most need it and for the most powerful. On a different note, a more somber note, I did want to offer my condolences. I know we lost a member of the city attorney's office this week. If there's anything y'all need from us, or anything we can do for the family, please let us know. I didn't want to talk about the wastewater spill during the unrelated item, but I did want to take a second and thank everybody who did show up that Sunday, who went straight to work, who addressed the immediate issue, because I mean, I think it was very important when you have an ongoing spill. All that being said, I eagerly await finding out what happened, what caused the failure. A million gallons of sewage, wastewater, you know, pouring into our community, we never want to see that. And I know previously, when we had such major spills, it was, it was storm-related, surge-related, and this seemed to be on a nice, clear day. So getting those details back, I think is going to be important. I think making sure we're communicating more effectively with the public and the press. When I saw the story break on Sunday, they were getting answers from people who are trying to do the work. We should not rely on the people who are in the weeds actually doing the work to speak to the press. So to see that there was nobody from the comms office available to speak to the press during crisis, that was concerning to me. It was concerning when I asked questions, if there was any risk to the public safety or the environment, I couldn't get an answer. And I think that's such vital information that we need to get out quickly and get to the press as quick as possible. So I know that there's no answer, there's no specific blame, you know, things can fail. We figure out why, and we fix, and we make sure they don't happen in the future, but I did want to offer that constructive criticism if this were to happen in the future. My last, lastly, I received the email from Stanley Sims, and this has been ongoing for a long time. We've had, Mr. Sims has been banned from City Hall when it's not public meetings. When he tries to meet with his elected officials, the city manager has threatened to have him arrested, and now when he comes and uses his constitutional right to come to public meetings, he continues to be harassed. We've heard statements from the police chief of confrontations, and now from the mayor's chief of staff, and everybody, and, Mr. Manager, your staff in government is treating him differently than other members of the public. And it's completely inappropriate. And I do have, I do want to ask some questions, and I have a quick video I'd like to play to illustrate the point.
What, what video are we playing?
It's comments Mr. Sims made publicly here.
Okay.
Government-funded liquor stalls on the South Side. We already, and that's an exaggeration, it's a stillery, a beer stillery, crossed the street from another beer stillery that came to this very same, I don't know if it was this boy, but I know they came to the city, and they said, if you don't give us the money, we're going to open it up anyway, which they did. Then now we've got another beer stillery opening up on Gaines Street. They didn't ask for $3 million in government funding. I think they got a little under $200,000. Why are we putting government-funded liquor stalls on the South Side?
And if we'd go to the slideshow, and, Mr. Manager, I'm so disappointed in what takes place with city management during our meetings. I mean, the public records reveal not just Mr. Sims, but several public speakers being ridiculed by management, being called stalkers, public speakers, labor leaders being teased, people being called asses, all of this going on from our upper-level management. And I have an expectation that if you're a rank-and-file employee, you know, you might want to go unwind after a meeting and have some comments, maybe about elected officials. I think that's normal, but management has to be held to a higher standard, and it's, and there's such picking and choosing. Some, some public citizens get texts that say, "Are you watching? Let's make jokes about Commissioner Welch," while other public speakers, who we have said, or management have said, are a threat, they're so scary that they can't come on city property, everybody's just, just having a good time ridiculing and making fun of. Can we pull up the slideshow, please?
Commissioner Matlow, what, is this a rant, or do you have a motion?
I do have a motion.
Okay. You want to get to the motion so we can have discussion?
Well, I have to explain what happened before I get to my motion.
Okay.
So during Mr. Sims' comments, I mean, I think we all heard that he might not pronounce "distillery" the way many of us do. But that's, I mean, what was happening during that meeting, Assistant Manager Avana Ojatayo, "Too many damn stirries." Cynthia Barber, "Stillries." Assistant City Manager Karen Jimminville laughed at "stillries." Assistant City Manager Christian Doolin, "Stillitize." Assistant City Manager Christian Doolan, stillitize. Assistant City Manager Wayne Tutter laughed at stillitize. Christian Doolan laughed at stilleries. And the chat had a meme inserted from the Simpsons, "Me Fail English. That's impossible." And I'm just so disappointed that these are the conversations we're having. We're paying people $200,000 a year, and this is the work product that's being produced. You know, yes, I'm still stuck on stilleries. Everybody laughs. And the leader of our city, the city manager, I love it. I love it. I mean, how is this an appropriate way to run a local government? How is this, we talk about at the beginning of every meeting, let's treat everybody with respect and dignity that comes to this microphone. But behind the scenes, we're just ridiculing people we disagree with and egging on people we do agree with. So, Mr. Manager, my motion is simply this. I move we direct the city manager to treat all members of the public with respect and dignity.
Oh, I think that's unanimously approved. I don't even think it takes a motion. But, you know, this is, okay. Are you done with your comments? Do you have more? Commissioner Malo?
He's seconded the motion.
Okay. Motion on the table. All those in favor signify. Let's amend the motion to include everybody, to treat everyone with dignity and respect, including ourselves, Commissioner. Go ahead, Mayor Protim.
I am not going to stoop to, to respond to a motion like that. This is not kids' play.
Right.
This is adulting. And I cannot control what others do, nor do I want to, because everybody has a job to do. The point, his point has been made, but Commissioner Malo, when the text gate took place and I was being shamed via text and other black commissioners were being shamed and the mayor, I didn't hear your voice. I did not hear your voice. So I'm disappointed that I did not hear your voice, because as my colleague, I would have expected that you would have defended me, but you did not. So I am not going to stoop, and I won't even just mention just all of the other antics and things that have taken place, because we as electors should be held to an even higher esteem. But I am not, I can't say that I've experienced that from some of my colleagues, and I don't want to relitigate what happened a year ago. But we cannot sit here and point fingers at what others are doing when we're not doing the best that we can do. My name, here your tweets, whether you're doing them or whoever is doing them, have been put out there. I don't tweet about you. I don't Facebook about you.
That's right.
I don't do any of that about you.
That's right.
But my name, my initials are out there. And if you are the leader of whoever is doing it or if you are doing that, then I suggest that if you, if you want us to entertain this motion, then you need to step up and say that you will be a leader and not allow that to happen to your colleagues. Because I respect you as a commissioner. I do not use your name in vain in social media or am I sending messages to the mayor or anyone else regarding you. I have better things to do.
On point, Ms. Maris, related to the motion on the table, this sounds political.
Let the Mayor Protim finish her comments, Commissioner Malo. Don't interrupt, please.
I watched your video, I watched your video from another agency blueprint that's not our business here that we're dealing with. You brought this in, you opened the door. I watched you hold up screenshots. I'm just saying, if that's what you want, then I want it too. I want to receive that same kind of respect. But you didn't defend me. In fact, you tried to remove me. And so I am not going to entertain that motion. And if I need to recuse myself, Madam Attorney, that's what I will do, I will leave this room. Because the other part of it is that the respect needs to come also both ways. It needs to come from the, from the audience as well as from us.
Absolutely.
Respect is not given, it is earned. And it needs to be earned. And these comments from the audience, it's just out of order. The quorum is just deplorable, but we have allowed it. And so it continues to increase and it's filtrating here. So if I need to recuse myself to avoid voting on something that is so childish, then that's what I'll do.
Understood. All right, there's a motion on the table. Would you like to recuse yourself?
I am, because this year I turned 60. I am accusing myself from this childish motion.
There is no, there is no voting conflict. I don't know of a basis that you would recuse yourself on this motion.
I do have a conflict. I do. My integrity, my, my, my reputation, I don't want to be clumped into child's play.
All right.
So.
I think I'm going to abstain myself.
So I'm not voting. I abstained, but I'm not voting.
Not going to entertain it either. All those in favor of Commissioner Malo's motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those that are voting against it.
I abstain, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry?
I abstain.
All those that voted against it, all those that abstain.
Abstain.
Abstain. Okay, there you go. Okay, Commissioner Malo, your next item, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the future, I think we should keep political conversations off the dais. But, I mean, just in closing, I'm disappointed in that action. We all have a duty to vote. You have to have a reason to abstain, and this has become.
I gave a reason.
I agree that things were childish, and what was childish is what I presented here today. I mean, this is professional city management at the highest level ridiculing members of the public. And it's not just Stanley, it's multiple members. At one point, they ridicule Kendall Brandt, a local reporter, for covering the firefighters and doing the math. So they call her Kendall the Mathematician. None of this behavior is acceptable for upper-level management. I wouldn't allow it at any of my businesses. And there's an expectation, again, once you, once you're the chief executive, once you're in charge, the example you set is how your employees treat people. And when they ridicule a member of the public and you say, I love it, you're sending a signal to keep discriminating against this gentleman who's already banned from City Hall for no real reason. Nobody has ever shown us anybody who is genuinely afraid of Mr. Sims. Is he loud? Yes. Is he obnoxious sometimes? Yes. Is he provocative sometimes? Yes. That's the right of every citizen of this country to come to their government and say what they please. How we, what he says is on him, how we respond is on us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson.
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protim.
Mr. Mayor, in the public who are still tuned in, I want to congratulate Dr. Patrice Floyd in Javasia Arts Conservatory. They're celebrating 44 years of service in our community, and they're having a celebration on October 25th from 5:00 to 6:30 at the Outlaws and Multipurpose Center. So I wanted to congratulate her and what she's doing in our community, the positive things, positive things that she's doing in promoting music and the arts with our community. And I also want to say, because I spend my Saturdays many times cheering on football teams, I want to say, go Knolls, go Rattlers, and go Buffs.
There you go.
And Eagles.
Oh, okay, and Eagles.
Don't leave out the Eagles.
In fact, I do believe that today is Coach Norvell's birthday, so happy birthday.
Oh, happy birthday, Coach.
Finally, Mr. Manager, I would like a full update, as I'm sure we all would, on the activity at Washington Square. I want to know what's going on. I'm getting very frustrated. I am concerned about the structural integrity of what has been built to this date. I want a full update on every lien that's on that property and has any actions been taken to cure it. And quite honestly, want to know what the timeline is to move forward. It's probably going to take some work with the CRA Executive Director as well. But I think that we need to refocus on exactly what's going on at Washington Square. And at some point, probably the next meeting, I will ask for a motion to bring back options for us to consider. I'm not asking for that right now, because I don't know if it's appropriate to ask it at a city commission meeting or at a CRA meeting. Because the tax credits, as you know, on the back end are through the CRA, yet I believe the liens are from the city itself. Inspection is on the city side as well. So I don't know exactly where to go, but I want us to paint a complete picture of exactly what's going on at Washington Square and how this community can move forward.
Mr. Mayor, on point.
Sure. Mayor Protim.
I had a conversation with the CRA director, and we were going to talk tomorrow, because there's conversation in the community that's misinformed, and I wanted to make sure, I asked him, and we'll deal with this tomorrow at a CRA meeting, I asked him to make sure that the public is aware that we have not spent one penny on Washington Square.
Correct.
Not one public dollar, at least out of CRA, on Washington Square.
Excellent.
Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Mr. Manager.
We'd be happy to. I'll send an email if that's acceptable. And I think that at this time, the controlling action is any kind of code enforcement, which has been done by the city. We've got quite a bit of history related to that, and certainly will be happy to share that. And I think they may beg the question, you know, how does the city proceed? And we'd be happy to provide an email update of that.
You know what? I'm going to adjourn at this point. Madam Mayor Protim, I really appreciate your wise words of wisdom.
May I be of glory?
We stand adjourned.
Amen.